And that causes a concern when you consider the Prison Right Elimination Act, which is something that we follow. The configuration of those facilities makes it difficult to ensure that we can follow those rules and poses a unique challenge for staff as they make sure kids are able to, you know, take care of their daily needs, but also keep them safe. The lack of ability to separate youth, going back to the long, narrow hallways, but again, one thing to think about is that the staff maintains an eight-to-one youth to staff ratio. To maintain that ratio, they have to be able to, they have to be able to maintain that ratio as they're moving kids through and throughout the building. And that oftentimes requires them to put the kids in their sleeping rooms to make sure they can actually move kids to whatever different function they're going to. And that causes, it interrupts their day, interrupt whether they're in classes or whether they're in programming, it interrupts their entire flow of their day. And it makes a challenge for the staff because they have to try to think of different ways to do these things effectively. Lack of staff space. The primary concern here is there's no staff shower. Well, it happens every once in a while, but if something happens and you get stuff on you, the best, the only place that you can go to take care of that is you actually have to use one of the showers, the same showers that the kids use. And that's, you know, not, not best practices, it's not comfortable for anybody. And secondly, there's not a really, there's no real true staff break room, so to speak. And then again, in a high-attendance city, high-tension environment, having that area to kind of just step back from an, from an issue or an event is important for the staff. And the educational spaces speaks to the eight-to-one ratio again. Again, any sort of interruption in the day that requires moving the kids around, you have to maintain that eight-to-one ratio. And that can interrupt the, the school time for the kids or the programming time for the kids. The second concern that we identified was the, was using statistics and projections to figure out, you know, can this facility hold the amount of kids we projected that we might have? So we hired Bill Garnos, who's done different, or similar studies for the Minnehaha County Jail to assess the population projections and trends. His analysis found that in 2026, the facility will need 43 to 48 beds. 2031, between 49 and 55. 2036, it'll need between 55 and 62 beds. And then in 2041, he projects about 60 to 69 beds. So that range, when you think about it, is actually based on an 80% staffing, or 80% cushion. That 80% is a national standard that criminal justice experts use when they assess how much room a facility needs, because that 80%, that extra 20%, allows for the facility to buffer in, you know, significant surges in population, staffing or segregating the kids as necessary to make sure everybody's separated properly. And that did just build in that cushion. And again, what you'll see as we present these options is we planned for that 20-year projection, so we planned for a 64-bed facility. So with that, those are the, the two driving factors. I'm going to turn it over to our architect from HDR, Jerry Guerrero. I'll have him introduce himself and he'll give you the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Tyler. And what's the question? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Jerry Guerrero with HDR. I'm the lead justice planner for HDR and I actually lead the, the entire practice. A little bit by myself, been doing this for about 35 years, justice architecture, dedicated my career to it, specifically with an interest in juvenile design. I've done approximately 30 facilities around the country, you know, really focusing on best practice rehabilitation, treatment, so we can get these kids back to the communities and, and, you know, be successful in life. So I'm going to just kind of, just a little bit on hit about what Tyler talked about. It's really about that, that separation and flexibility of best practices in the current facility. You know, back when this facility, excuse me, was originally designed in the 60s, you know, things about mental health, acute mental health, all the issues that, that we're dealing with now. The crimes that, that kids are doing, you know, back then it was fighting or, you know, not showing up to school. Now the crimes are getting more violent, felonies, a lot of gun violence. So having that separation and flexibility, not only with kids, with different mental health states, but ages, you know, we definitely want to make sure that kids are separated young and old. So I do, I'm going to go through just some of what Tyler talked about and show you some of the concerns that we have. You know, Tyler talked about the one entrance, there's one main entrance right now where the public, you can see on the left-hand side there, that's the entrance of the facility. The public, the law enforcement, the kids, all enter in one spot. And that really is a very unsecure situation, especially, you know, if kids, there could be somebody in the waiting room of a family that could be, you know, there could be some confrontation. So having that separation for kids, being out of the view of public is really key because they don't want to be on display. And really, that's a very traumatizing, you know, situation. You know, sleeping rooms, you can see here, you know, I, I, I think about it, you know, we, we want to create environments where we can treat and rehabilitate these kids. And when I look at, you know, a room like this, you know, and God forbid, you know, one of my kids would end up in this or, you know, somebody in my family. But you want to make sure they're in an environment that does, you know, show treatment and, you know, give them a normal sleeping room, what they've come from, from their home, you know, well, or what they haven't come from, from their home, because a lot of these kids have been under some serious stress in their life. But again, you can see, you know, doors that have mechanical locks on them. That's just unsecure because somebody physically has to go unlock them to get the kid out. You know, we talked about the long, narrow hallways, as you can see here, there's just no room for separation. Everybody's going down one corridor. Tyler talked about it, you know, I've talked to Jamie a lot, you know, if there's a, if there's a situation, all the kids have to go back to the room and they have to be locked down. And so that means they're not getting educated in the treatment programs that they, that they need. Again, Tyler talked about on the right-hand side, you can see the, the showers, where we talked, you know, it's kind of like a, like you talked about, a high school shower, there's a lot of, everybody's exposed, there's no dignity, there's no privacy, and there's issues, like he talked about the PRIA issues. And then he mentioned the courtroom. Obviously, you can see the size of the courtroom, very tight. And when you have to have multiple families in here, it can get very confrontational. So there's really no area separation, really no, you know, area of refuge for the judge. So again, these are tight areas that are not best practices that we really want to investigate as we go into this justice center.
Good morning. Andrew Etrum with Architecture Incorporated. We were hired along with HDR and Associated Consulting Engineering back in the spring. Want to describe to you the process that we worked through. So the resources that we were provided upfront were the, the Garnos report that Tyler referenced and also a UJS report that was done previously. We worked with a relatively large group of people, including commissioners, county staff, Jamie and JDC staff, the design team, and worked through a series of workshops starting back in May, trying to establish what the project vision and goals would be, understanding what the, the types and quantities and sizes of spaces would be needed in a facility, and then working through some conceptual design options as well. As a group, we also did a series of tours. We toured King County facility in Seattle virtually, that was a project that, that Jerry was involved in. And then we also had a, a good-sized group that toured Wyandotte County, Johnson County, and Jasper County in person.
And you can see in the right hand, up in the right-hand corner is just an image of our visioning sessions that we worked through with, with Jamie and his staff. And then on, on the bottom, you can see a, an image from the tour. So the project vision, you know, we, we started with a number of exercises, working with Jamie and another, more stakeholders, but really went through a number of exercises and really got a lot of input of what's going on in their current facility, what they need to do better, what they need to enhance. So we went through a number of exercise, again, you know, talked about the treatment and goals. We looked at, we looked at it really holistically. We looked at the building systems, sustainability, you know, really, because this is going to be a 50-year-plus building and we really want to make this, you know, the most efficient and operational for the county. Some images of all the different visioning boards that, that are best practices around the country, whether it's a sleeping room, a classroom, a program room, courtrooms, staff areas, you know, we talked about, Tyler talked about showers for the staff should, should something happen, if they get, you know, some types of fluid on them, they don't have anywhere to go shower. And we got to think about this facility, you know, we always think about the kids, yes, we're, we're trying to design a facility for kids, but the staff are in here longer than the kids actually. And in order to recruit and retain, you know, we still need those best practices of biophilic design principles, natural light, you know, ventilation, areas to the outdoor. So because the staff are in here so long, and you've seen some of them images, you know, to work in those environments for eight to 12 hours a day is very stressful without, you know, if they don't have area for respite. This is a, you know, not only did we have, you know, Jamie and his staff and the other stakeholders, but we actually involved the kids. We, we created this activity book that, that showed a lot of the visioning boards and gave them activities, like they could draw and design their own sleeping room. What would that be like? What would their, what the perfect program room be like for treatment? And it was very inspiring of what we got back and all the information from the kids. So again, you know, we want to design a facility that's trauma-informed, you know, respond to these issues that kids have been dealing with throughout their life and making sure we're providing the spaces that, that can treat them, that can get them back, that family reunification piece, you know, give them back that hope and dignity and, you know, culture for the youth and staff.
So we, with that group, worked through an understanding and put, and put together this space list document that looks at all of the different components of the facility, understanding very specifically the needs of all of, all of these different components within the facility. We, we looked at the needs for the long-term or a 20-year projections. And so behind all of these individual line items that you see is much more detailed, talking about each specific space, the requirements of those space, the size and quantity of those spaces. And in the end, we said, if this were to be a wholly new facility, it would be 67,000 square feet.
Yeah. The other thing I want to just mention here, you know, when we vetted this, we really challenged the, I think we were all challenged, we, the design team was challenged, the staff was challenged, Jamie's staff of, you know, the, the must-have versus the nice-to-haves. And when we really vetted it out, you know, we said, let's really put them in a list. And what we came up with was the must-haves. These are must-haves for best practices of a new justice center. And, you know, we put aside some of the nice-to-haves because we know we're working with a tight budget, we're working with a tight schedule, so we really wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence as a design team and stakeholders. So I'll go through the conceptual designs here. You want to start with this one?
So part of the process as well was to, if this were to be a new facility, understand where that new facility would want to be constructed. And so we, as a, as a group, started talking about potential locations in and around Sioux Falls and fairly quickly came to the consensus that the, no new site was going to be as appropriate or check the boxes that the, the existing site checks. And, and those three critical factors that we all discussed were the, the ease of access for law enforcement and for the partner counties, public transportation access, so people are coming here for court or visitation. And so, so having ease of access for, or access to public transportation is important, and then also acceptance of the use. It's, it's been here and the neighborhood accepts this use. And so instead of pursuing new properties, what we did is, is we looked at two options that Jerry's going to work through. One is a, an addition and renovation to the existing, and the second option is building a completely new structure with phase construction of, of phase one demolition of the existing and then a second phase of construction.
Yeah, like, oh, what happened there? Oh, there we go. I got it, I got it. So like Andrew said, yeah, we were challenged at looking at two options, really, how could we use the existing facility? As you can see here, this is, this is what would it be on a full build-out after all the phases are complete, new housing with separation that's needed, the new court, justice center, the new, obviously, kind of staff support area. So what that would mean was, what we'd want to do is we, in order to phase this correctly on this site, we'd have to build the new housing areas with support and obviously leave the, the existing intact operationally until that's complete. And then once that's complete, then we can go back and we can tear down the old linear housing from both the, the male and female side. Then once that's complete, we come back and then the next phases would be the courts and all the staff support areas. And the challenge with this is to, the big challenge with this is, is operationally for, for Jamie's staff to be able to operate this during all these different phases of construction, which, you know, will take a lot of time and a lot of effort to move kids back and forth while there's, you know, actual construction going on in the building. So then what we looked at was, you know, how could we ultimately build a new facility? So what we came up with on the site was, we could actually build all the housing with all the programs, all the support, and all the facilities of, all the MEPs to support the, the entire structure and really provide areas to do temporary court, temporary staff, you know, while the existing facility is still in operation. And then once this is totally complete, they can operate out of that and then we can come back and build this new court-staff-support area in two phases, so the building can be built in two phases. Obviously, you can see the site, much better circulation, separation of juvenile staff from public, from, from court staff, so it really does really give a lot of functional flow and safety to the facility.
Dave Deary, representing Henry Carlson Construction. We were hired as a construction manager for this project. So one of our first tasks here were to take a hard look at these two options and build what we perceive as an accurate cost model to build option one or option two. Is we built two models and all of our estimates were built upon 2023 pricing data. And so we're forecasting for a project that would be bought out next year. So our, we worked shoulder-to-shoulder with the design team and the ownership group and really came up with some really good ideas. And even though what we're working with is purely conceptual, we built some pretty comprehensive cost models. And so our team of Mike Ralston and Travis Haddelstad and Tom Novak really dug deep into this project and I believe we've really built some really solid models here. So the, the first option, which is the renovation and addition, we came up with a construction number of about $39.8 million. And that's a 57,000-square-foot facility, built in five phases with a construction duration of about 31 months. And because of the amount of renovation and trying to tear the building down in bits and pieces, we carried a 15% construction contingency in that model. Additional in that is what I say is some, some dollars that you never get anything back for, and we're carrying about $450,000 in phasing accommodations, which are temporary partitions, temporary enclosures, and time-related expenses to build it in, in five phases as opposed to two. The second option I looked at, 67,000-square-foot facility, construction number of about $40.9 million. That facility would be built in two phases, but in only 27 months. And because we've taken a lot of the risk of the existing building, trying to protect it, reuse parts of it, we felt comfortable that we can use a 10% construction contingency on that. And so there again, 67,000 square feet for about $40.9 million. And these are just the construction pieces of the total project cost, and I'll let Dick here speak to the overall project cost.
Good morning. Dick Strasberg with the Taker Group. So when we add on the, the soft costs, I'll jump to the, the totals first, if we do option one is 48,954, and 40,954,000 dollars. And the, the option two is 50,307,000. So when we add in the soft costs, we add in the professional fees, which are the architecture fees, legal, owner-rep fee, survey, geotech, environmental, construction testing, and so on. That comes in at, at 13%. Then we have the furniture fixtures and equipment, add another 5% for that. And then we've got an owner contingency of, of 5%. Now, going into this, we fully expected that, that the renovation and the doing an addition would be substantially less than building new. That was our expectation. We looked at the existing building, I'd say, more thoroughly than typical, looking at the mechanical systems, electrical, all, all the building systems, the condition. We fully expected this building to, to come out, you know, substantially lower than, than new. Now, after we run all the numbers, after doing all, all the research on it, what has happened on it is it's, it's virtually the same and you end up with 10,000 square feet less. So it's, it's pretty clear that option two is going to make more sense, especially this disruption piece. The disruption of building a building, you know, renovating a building over five phases, and we tried to pull that down to, challenging contractors and others involved, you know, can we do it in three phases? Can we do it in four? But after doing a pretty thorough investigation, we've concluded that, you know, the five phases is what would have to happen to keep the building, you know, fully operational. So we'll be next. So now we're going to talk about operational costs.
So obviously, building it is one thing, but then you have to keep it, keep it running for the next, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. So the first thing we considered was, how is this going to impact operational costs of utilities, repair, and maintenance? So our facilities director compared what it costs on a average monthly cost per square foot basis to maintain the jail and the public safety facility, compared that with the existing juvenile detention center. And what it actually ends up breaking down to is practically the same. So that's something we knew, wanted to make sure that we weren't building something that we weren't able to afford to maintain when we compare it to something that's essentially our most recent construction. You can see that those costs essentially even out to the same, same number. The other aspect is keeping this facility staffed. So I'm going to have Jamie Gravett, the JDC director, explain kind of what they perceive to be the, the staffing challenges.
You look at that slide in your, or I'm sorry, Jamie Gravett, Juvenile Detention Center. You look at that slide and you're probably wondering, how can you staff a larger building with the same amount of staff? And the, the answer is, is we currently staff for duties. So we have one person maybe doing showers, one person doing room checks, and then one person watching a group in a classroom. We can combine those with the new housing units to, all of it gets done by one staff instead of three. We believe we may need one or two new staff to start this when it opens. And the other thing you need to understand is, we're not going to open and, and have 64 kids a day to be open. So we're going to be staffing for 48 kids when the facility opens. So by being able to do most of our duties within that one housing unit, we can maintain our one-to-eight ratio of staff, we can get showers done, room checks, all with that one staff and keep the group going at the same time.
If you could just elaborate on that, this is something I learned in our jail process, but any design with a pod, a lot of you not that different. It's one night special.
Correct. By designing the housing units as eight-bed housing units, we maintain our ratio of eight youth to one staff. We'll be able to do programming within that pod, because there's like a day room area where we can do programming, they'll eat their meals in that pod, we'll have a shower in that pod where they'll shower one at a time instead of like a group shower, like what you've seen in the pictures before. And the staff has control of that whole area. In addition, one of the problems that we have with maintaining our eight-to-one ratio is when we get calls from law enforcement and admissions to our facility. With the post-type assignments, we would be able to have two people posted to where we don't have to pull people off the floor to complete those intake calls or admissions or releases or anything like that. When they're not able to, or when they're not busy with those types of duties, they would be our floating staff going around giving other staff breaks, or they would be our response team if there was an emergent situation.
Can I just do one follow-up question? One of the things that we didn't really get to spend as much time on this morning, but that we did discuss more in depth in a couple of building committee meetings when we were looking at this. So what happens right now to the, to the juveniles in your facility when the police call you out or something?
If we cannot maintain that eight-to-one ratio in like a classroom that they're in because we have to pull a staff off the floor to complete that admission or that intake call, we have to put all the kids down until we can reacquire that eight-to-one ratio. So they may be down for a half hour to an hour while we're completing that duty, and then we can reattain that eight-to-one ratio and bring them back out of their rooms. So, or if there's an issue where we have to deal with maybe an assault within the building, we have to put all the kids down because the number of staff that are required to respond to that situation, we have to put them down until we can reacquire a ratio again. So, so ultimately, we're putting the kids down too much compared to what we should be doing by best practices. Best practices, we want those kids out of their rooms from 7:30 in the morning till 10 o'clock at night. You know, he talked a little bit about if they're in school, if, if it's, those things happen during school time, they're missing out on school because they're down in their rooms so that we can get our stuff done to deal with an admission or a phone call or, you know, a, a phone call from law enforcement where we determine if they come into our facility or not.
Just as a clarification, I think you did clarify it, just for folks who aren't, haven't had as much time in your world, is that when you say you're putting the kids down, what that means is you're putting them in their rooms by themselves and they're not able to participate in other activities.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, my choice of words are kind of bad. I heard about this the last time. Not putting kids down like you would think of a dog. We're putting them into their, their cells until we can reacquire that.
Thank you.
And I would clarify too, they're not jail cells. They're secure sleeping rooms. And in an, in an ideal situation, they would be sleeping in their rooms and they would be having their activities out of their rooms on their pods instead of back and forth between their sleeping rooms and being locked in.
They're, they're sleeping rooms, but if the normal person from the public had, when they see those rooms, they see a jail cell.
Right.
So we, we want to make that a better situation in the future.
Yes. Additional comments before we go on? Okay. Tyler.
Thanks, Jamie. So there's 15 partner counties that are signed on a joint powers agreement with us to receive a discounted bed rate if they have kids that need to come to this facility. There's a formula in that agreement that estimates how much each partner county would expect to pay if they were, if we were to create a new facility. I won't spend too much time on this because it's an estimate and, you know, in a few months, if this happens, these numbers might change. But ultimately, what you can see is that Minnehaha County can expect to spend about 70% of the total cost or be on the hook for that amount. And Susan or Ben, if you want to come explain what we project to see with the, the bonding of this facility.
Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. So what we did here was take a look at our current bond redemption property tax levies. You can see, you recently approved for year 2023 our property tax budget within that fund roughly $4.2 million in property tax revenue to, to, which currently services our existing debt. We are estimating, based upon a $50 million bond issue with currently a 4.5% interest rate in a 20-year term, that our levy would need to, we would need to levy property tax revenue of about $8.9 million for 2024. That would result in an increase for about a $300,000 home on an annual basis of about $63 increase. Many, this reflects Minnehaha County's total amount of the bond payments that we are estimating for that year. And then as you can see, as things go forward, it's, it's pretty consistent. In 2028, you'll see a decrease in the estimated levy and that's due to the paying off of an existing other piece of debt.
Questions on that slide?
Yes.
Susan, we've had a discussion of $300,000 at the toll, but is, what's the impact any different for commercial properties or ag? And if you break the value of that, or kind of all the savings?
Thank you, Tyler. So we know the value on a home, but is commercial property or ag property impacted similarly or how, how does that happen?
I don't have that information today. How we've usually calculated the levy at this level is just at a high-level perspective. You know, there are differences in calculations and for those different types of property. I can provide that information and look into that at a later time.
You know, yeah, not a hurry, but I'm just curious, you know. We always talk about the house, but there's a whole lot more than houses that we tax in Minnehaha County, so.
We can get that information for you, provide it at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
So can I go back to the previous slide where we talk about the county bond payments, the partner payments? Does that actually, does that come into our general fund? And then we use that to offset more operational costs?
That is what we are at this point estimating that that would happen, is that those funds would come into our general fund because Minnehaha County would have to bond for the entire amount and we would be responsible for the entire amount of the debt service. So the bond redemption fund would be the place where we'd levy the entire amount. The members from, the dollars from the member counties would come into the general fund and would help offset costs in that fund.
So it's not exactly the same, but it's similar to what we do with the jail where we entered into a contract with Lincoln County where they guaranteed so many beds. And then that money comes into our general fund and we use it to offset operational costs, in essence.
Correct, correct. It's a little different of a formula, but the end result ends up at the same place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, one more question, kind of on an operational side. Jamie, do we, like our jail, take, for lack of a better term, prisoners from other counties or states and house them? Do you have revenue, revenue source from other counties other than these 15?
Not much from other counties. Mainly our 15 partner counties and the Department of Corrections. The South Dakota Department of Corrections is our second highest user behind Minnehaha County. They pay a higher rate because they're not a partner county with us. So they pay a higher rate. They don't give the discount because they've paid on bonds either in the past or going to pay on bonds in the future at this point.
So once a youth has gone through the legal process and they're convicted and they're basically receiving a sentence, they might be 17 years old and they're sentenced to 20 years. For a year, they're going to be housed with you. Does the state then pay for that year until they're 18 and go to, on their 18th birthday party, they go to the state pad?
That's correct. The only difference between, they would be considered in the adult Department of Corrections at that point. The only difference between the juvenile Department of Corrections and adult Department of Corrections is by statute, with juveniles, the county pays for the first seven days on a juvenile. Gives them time to assess and determine a placement. With the adult, it starts day one, so there is no seven-day period like with the juveniles, but they're paying that higher rate as well, which is right now, I believe it's $335 a day.
Wow, okay. I've been wondering that, appreciate you having that answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan, you want to continue on?
Is there any other questions on this slide? The next slide here is just, reflects the impact of JDC-only or a juvenile justice program bond issue in that bond redemption fund. The previous slide reflected all of our existing bond issues and payments. So this just gives a clear view for you of what JDC's, a JDC project would impact. So you'll see in for 2024, we would estimate that the levy would go up approximately $64 for a $300,000 home. And that includes, and that calculation includes an increase in estimate for the preliminary asset values that goes into that calculation to determine the levy. And then this current, this slide just shows you our current debt service payments for the bond redemption levy, bond redemption fund. You can see we currently have a courthouse project that will be fully paid off in 2027. Our jail project that was completed in 2017 as well as a projected JDC project.
Susan, what year does that jail project fall off?
I believe it's a 20-year debt service, so we have a while still.
Okay. It looks like that ends our presentation. I'm just wondering if there's any questions from the commission? We have answered a few questions. I will say, Tyler, do you want to talk a little bit about the financial review group? Or the facility review group that we're working on?
Sure, so in 2019, the county gathered a group to review the facilities of the entire county. That group, one of the things they mentioned was the need for a Sally Port and improvements to the courthouse at the juvenile detention center. They also suggested, you know, a highway facility and a few other things. So one thing we have pursued is to gather that group again to get their feedback, not only on what's happened with the other projects, but this project specifically. So we're in the works to schedule a time to discuss this.
And I think they gave us some financial suggestions at that time. And that's part of the reason we want to get them back together is just to see what their financial thoughts were. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. So I do think this is an important part of the process. And just for a point of clarification, this group is, when it was originally formed, is a group of citizens from across Minnehaha County reflecting a lot of different backgrounds from people who are familiar with taxation to folks who are very familiar with financing and buildings and all kinds of things. I think they were really helpful to us in putting together a vision for our new highway facility that we were able to fund through different mechanisms so it doesn't show up on this bond formula that we just went through. But at the time, they did tour the JDC building, but the focus was much more focused just on the Sally Port and the courtroom. And so I think it will be really helpful to get that group back together, help them see, this whole presentation, clearly a lot of work has gone into this over the last year. But I think from a high level, it would be really helpful for them to take a look at it and report back to us whether there's anything that they think we're missing in this proposal.
Additional questions or comments from the commission? Okay, I would ask if there's anybody in the public that wants to come out on this particular item on the agenda? Not seeing anybody moving. I would thank you, Jerry, for making the trip here to visit. And I thank you for local people who have worked so hard on this project. It's nice to see you again and we'll be in touch with what our next stage. Commissioner? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just, one final comment. I know we have a heavy agenda and I won't take too much time, but there's a lot of you here today that weren't here specifically for this, I'm guessing. But we would really appreciate your input as you listen to this. Like I said, we've had the opportunity as commissioners to have several building committee meetings, which is where we usually kind of vet out any new building proposal. So that might be why there weren't a lot of questions this morning, but that doesn't mean that we don't take this seriously or that we don't recognize that there's a significant financial commitment here. I think that if you have any questions, we'd really like to visit with you about it. This is a very old facility and I, the pictures, there's a lot more pictures if you really would like to see the condition of what the facility looks like now. I think the jail, before we even did this last jail addition, had already switched over to this new, newer model of supervision of folks in custody. And we didn't have to go through that whole conversation, but when we were looking at the jail addition, this model we found was still state-of-the-art. I mean, we didn't have to change up how we had organized and designed the pods for supervision and those kind of things. But like any, anybody who's done any building recently, none of this is cheap. And so it's not something, it's not a decision that we will ultimately take lightly and we are looking for feedback. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Commissioner Bender. Any others? Okay, with that, we'll let those guys go. If they want to go, we'll free up a few chairs for people who've been standing. We thank you for your time. And we're going to move on to item number 11, which is an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to deny a conditional use permit number 2271 to allow a bed and breakfast establishment. Kevin, good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. And yes, this item is conditional use permit 2271, which is an appeal of that permit. The planning commission decision was to deny the request. The applicant is requesting to run a bed and breakfast facility out of the existing dwelling on this property. The proposed operation will use an online listing service of Airbnb to rent the entire house and no meals are planned to be served by the petitioner. And with stating that, I've come to kind of understand that there's some confusion of why we are listing this as a conditional use permit. So I'll kind of try to explain here. So Airbnb does what's called a short-term rental, where just a short rental, either it can be for a night or a couple of weeks. It's different than, say, a long-term lease where somebody rents a house for a year. Short-term rentals are not defined within the county ordinance. Airbnb is fairly new. And since it's not defined in the county ordinance, county staff made the determination, you have a few different options. You can either allow short-term rentals everywhere. You can say they're not in the ordinance, they're not allowed anywhere. Or we decided to go with this process that a short-term rental is similar enough to a bed and breakfast where we've classified as a bed and breakfast under the ordinance, in which case we have this public hearing so we can determine on an individual lot whether or not a Airbnb location is appropriate for this site. So that was just some background of why we are here discussing Airbnb as a bed and breakfast, to clarify that up. Planning Commission heard this item initially on September 26th. At the hearing, prior to the hearing, there was an opposition letter and a petition that was provided to the planning commission. Four neighborhood residents spoke at the hearing in opposition. And the planning commission denied the conditional use permit with four votes for denial and three votes for approval. I'll go through maybe a couple of the items on the, what was submitted. The petitioner has submitted a narrative as how to, they plan to operate the facility, including the Airbnb listing, how many people are going to be listing, how are they going to react to complaints for noise and that sort of thing. Some letters, there's a lot of materials for this item. And I'll zoom down to some photos here eventually. The petitioner's presented a PowerPoint at the hearing. It was provided. Promise, there is a photo. Okay, here's, as everybody here can see that there has been a lot of materials listed here in both, how the operation's going to work, why it should happen and why the neighbors are concerned on both sides of this. And there's the site location again. The house is located here, there's a garage, there's a long driveway. I'll just note that this is in relation, the next item on this agenda is referring to these two lots right up here. So they do share same driveway and have similar purposes. There's the driveway entrance into the lot, there's a large building there. There was a tennis court located right here and the petitioner's in the process of removing that tennis court. And then here you can kind of see the house and the front yard and then turning down the driveway to the neighbor to the south where the property is largely screened by the existing buildings and trees. And then this is looking at the driveway, looking to the east. And then this is from the end of the driveway, looking down the private road that accesses the property. The staff report. When staff reviewed it, there was recommendation that included conditions of approval. And when staff approved or recommended approval, there were seven conditions. But since it was denied, none of those conditions were taken. So if you were, the county commission may uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the permit or they may change it to approve it with conditions or amend the planning commission decision by approving it with changes to the conditions as well. And with that, I think we can get started with the public comment and any questions?
So we'd start with, is there any questions for Kevin on his initial presentation? I'm not seeing any. So this is how we're going to run this. We will start with the proponents, which is going to be the people who are in favor of this bed and breakfast. And they, and I try to keep track of their time so that one person doesn't get six hours and the other person gets 10 minutes. So we try to keep them fairly even, or at least your opportunity. So we'll let them speak first and then there'll be questions from the commission from them if they want. And then the opponents, the people who are opposed to this, will get an opportunity to speak. Do you guys both have spokespersons? Does a proponent have a spokesperson? A person in favor, okay. Does the opponent side have a spokesperson? Okay, so we're looking at possibly just two people speaking, am I correct or not? There'll be, there'll be a few other people that will speak on the opponent side, okay? And so we will ask you again to identify yourself and the county that you reside in. And we will try to be respectful of each other's time. The commission can ask questions when they want, they can call you back. And when the opponents are done, the proponents will have an opportunity to come back and say anything they want at the end. And then we'll go to the commission. And at that point, you're not talking anymore unless the commissioner calls on you. So those are kind of my ground rules. All right, let's start with the proponents.
Just going to get plugged in. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. I'm going to, before you get started, Tyler can help you.
No, it won't work for me. Oh, okay.
I just also want to say that I did receive a lot of phone calls from the opponents and I received paper, a document that I sent to staff and I think that's been given to all commissioners, just in full disclosure that I received a call, a lot of calls, and I think a lot of people up here did receive calls. So, okay, you can go forward.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. My name is Christian Louder, 3775 Highview Drive in Colorado Springs, Colorado. I am one of the owners of the property. I'm not sure if we could possibly get up the documents that were given by us to the commission last night at all.
They're on the drop, some of them's on drop packs, aren't they? No, the ones that you gave to us last night did not make the timeline. They had to be before, by Friday at noon in order to make it into the presentations.
Understood, okay, thank you. Well, yeah, so I'm just here, I'm going to keep it real brief this time. Want to just, you know, emphasize the documents that I did provide maybe behind the timeline there. Really captures all of our resolutions for every concern that's been brought to our attention. So there's really nothing that we won't be able to handle on this. I just wanted to give a little bit about my background. I graduated with a bachelor's degree in residential property management from Ball State University. And then I have a master's degree in real estate from Georgetown University. I've worked my entire career working in property management and I've had thousands of interactions with residents from around the country. I've managed individual communities of more than 300 homes just in one community at a time. And so I've dealt with a lot of, you know, firsthand experiences regarding any issue you can really have in residential problems. And so nothing that, you know, we've, we've been informed of as a concern is something that we can't handle. And we're going to be totally prepared to make sure that, you know, it's not going to turn into a complaint. We're going to try to avoid that in everything we do so that there are not complaints and we're preventing any issues from actually coming up. So like I said, I've assembled quite a bit of tools and tactics to make our property run smoothly and be a great part of this community. My, my family and I are very grateful to be here today and share our vision for our property with you, and, and we are thankful that our property is part of a, a greater community that will voice their concerns, because that starts a conversation like this, and that is how we, you know, maintain the strength of our community. So, very grateful to be here today. Our presentation submitted to the commission really covers everything in detail. I'm here if you want to ask me any questions about, you know, what we've submitted, either to the Planning and Zoning Commission or beyond. And, you know, our community is our priority now and into the future. So I'm just gonna, real quick, go over the executive summary in that document submitted last night. Spot zoning will not be an issue, because the proposed structure to be placed on the subject property is congruent with the surrounding neighborhood structures, and much more aesthetically pleasing than what's currently there. In the documents I gave last night, there are shoreline pictures, so we've gone out on the water, taken pictures of all of the surrounding structures on the lake, and I've done a rendering of what the new proposed structure would look like next to all the other structures. It's gonna look so much more congruent. It's gonna be kind of like night and day, the current structure's definitely deteriorating. There's a picture of the current structure up close. And you know what, I realize I'm talking about the, the proposed structure, but we're talking about the existing properties, so, sorry, I'll switch gears there real quick. But, so our subject property, the lake house that we're not replacing, we're gonna be managing that 24/7. So that's going to be with my mother and stepfather Harlan, who live here, and also myself and my wife, we live in Colorado. But, you know, we have technology and tactics that are gonna allow us to be able to manage the property from wherever we are. A couple of things that we've proposed is noise monitors on the property, and that's going to alert us if there's ever a noise decibel level that goes beyond a threshold that we set. And we've kind of figured out exactly what those thresholds are based on, you know, unfortunately, the county doesn't have a, a decibel level system mapped out, but Sioux Falls does, so we're basing our decibel levels off of the Sioux Falls noise ordinance. And so, we're gonna keep our thresholds for noise well below that Sioux Falls threshold, so we don't want that to ever get to a point where it will be a concern. And if there is noise above our thresholds, we'll get notified immediately, 24/7, you know, seven days a week, all year. And that's going to allow us to be able to contact that guest and let them know, hey, you know, there's been a little bit more noise than what we're allowing on our property, and this is just a warning to kind of drop that level down. And so if that noise continues, then, you know, we're going to cancel the reservation, and then make a physical presence on the property, either by ourselves, or we'll have a, a third-party courtesy patrol company come out and make a presence as well. So, we're going to be able to manage the property from wherever we are at any time. The, the sewer system's also a concern. I've proposed a couple things, you know, as far as how we're going to be responsible members of the community as far as the sewer goes. That includes there's a device that we will purchase for all of the toilets on the property. In fact, there's only one. And that's, that's at the house, and we'll put this device in the toilet. It has hooks on it. I don't want to get into the real nitty-gritty on this, but if there's hygiene products that are not supposed to get into the sewer, the hooks will catch it, and it'll be on our property, you know, before it ever reaches the rest of the sewer system. So, we, if there ever is a problem, like say, you know, the guest of our neighbors had something go down their sewer, and that causes an issue in the sewer system, we're gonna be just as responsible for paying for that as the rest of the community. So, we're gonna be right there with everybody in the same boat. There's another concern brought up about the roads. We are not going to see an increase in traffic. I'm certain of that. There's a, a comment made in the, you know, concern document that my, my grandfather was the sole occupant of this home, and, in fact, he has not lived there in the last two years, and it almost kind of showed like, that the concern preferred that the home be vacant. That would not be a good thing for the community, a vacant home is never a good thing for the community. So, we just want to, you know, relay that we're going to be at this property almost probably every day. My, my mother will have to go over and clean the property after every guest, and we're going to maintain the property, you know, as far as lawn care and other maintenance such as, you know, involving the home. And so, we're going to physically have a presence on the property all the time, and we're gonna know everything that's going on. Another technological advantage we're gonna have is, we're gonna have exterior cameras on the property, so we'll have a, a visual on what's going on. And that's not just from being, you know, physically there, that's going to be available to us 24/7 as well. So I'll be in Colorado, I can look anytime that I want to on my Ring camera and see what's going on on the property. So, we're going to be all over it. Again, we're gonna be proactive rather than reactive on these things. And another issue that was brought up was property values. I have a master's degree in real estate from Georgetown, and I definitely do not agree with the comment that property values are going to decrease because of an Airbnb, and just want to, you know, open the floor up to any, any questions. But first, you know, in conclusion, I'm certain that our conditional use permit should be approved, as it will only benefit all stakeholders. You know, we, the last vote at the Planning and Zoning Commission was, you know, narrowly denied. Three, four vote, and so, the main thing was that I, our, our group spoke a little bit too long and didn't have our argument together. So, you know, definitely don't want to do that again, and wanna, wanna open it up to any, any questions or comments.
Thank you, Christian. Do you have any, Christian Kersky?
Two questions. I imagine you have a business plan for this property. What's your occupancy percentage anticipated?
Best-case scenario is maybe 60%. And, and that's a big part of why we do not think traffic will increase, because if you're taking a full-time homeowner living there, that's in and out every single day. And with 60% occupancy, there could be times that, you know, that the property's not occupied for three days, four days at a time. And, you know, worst-case scenario, actually, the, the average state occupancy for Airbnbs in South Dakota is 37%. So, we're, we're assuming a little bit higher than the historical averages.
So, the way I understand it, the family owns five properties out here?
Oh, the parcels, so it, it's broken down into parcels, but there's two structures that we own on Wall Lake in Hartford, and two, two living structures that we own.
Are they adjacent to this in any way?
Oh, oh, sure.
There's six several, separate parcels that are divided up. Wall Lake is notorious for the way they set the boundaries up out there. We're not completely sure how that all happened.
You want to give your name, give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jackie Toms. 26557559, East Shore Place is our property. Anyway, it's, it's just divided into parcels, but it's not like it's all these different separate pieces of property. They're all combined. So essentially, the
How many parcels is this property?
Commissioner Kersky, do you see the white lines and the red lines? So we're talking about the one in the red line, but each one of those white-lined ones are their property, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So that's where all your property lines are. And the one right next to it, to the north of this house, is the one that we'll be talking about next, which is just the little cabin.
So you own, or the property we're talking about is the red line, but you own the parcels or property that's in the white areas? Okay, thank you, that gives me perspective.
Commissioner, Commissioner Benega?
So I'm curious about the argument that I'm, no doubt we're gonna hear, that Airbnb usage is really a business, it's not like a rental property to a long-term renter. I've certainly stayed in Airbnb, so I'm familiar with the business model. I'm just curious what your response is to that.
Thank you for bringing that up, yeah, absolutely. I think one of the comments was made that this should be classified as a specialty resort property, which is not accurate by the legal definition of what we're operating. It's actually more closely aligned with what's called a vacation rental. And, you know, it, we will be earning money from this, and that money is intended to improve our property at the lake. And, you know, that money is also intended to keep this property in our family. We're not a big corporation, we're not a resort, we're not a hotel. This is two individual homes, you know, if we're talking about both permits, that, that we're just trying to keep in our family. And it's, it's, it's going to be more of like a cottage industry, where it's just two small properties that my mother, you know, she'll be cleaning, she'll be actually, you know, communicating with the guests just like we will be. And it's, it's meant more to just be a, a small community, I feel, with
Right, it's not a commercial business. That's not, that's not what we're doing. It's just an Airbnb, and if you, if you're familiar with an Airbnb, I mean, a simple, people have to go through a reservation process, and we have the right to decline or to accept their reservation. So it, it isn't like these people, and, and I think that was another thing that was mentioned in the opponents, is that there's gonna be people out driving around looking at the property, that's not possible. What essentially happens is, is you go in, you, you get an Airbnb, or if you're looking for a place to stay, you go in and make a reservation, you do not get the address to the property that you're going to stay in until probably, what, a day or two before you actually arrive?
Yeah, as I said, I'm pretty familiar with the process, so thank you very much.
I know, but our neighbors aren't, they, they aren't familiar with that process, so I'm just trying to help it, help understanding, help you understand that.
Commissioner Benega?
I've got a, well frankly, I was out there on Saturday, just looking around a little bit, because I was a little confused after reading through the prior conversations. Tell me about where the other B&amp;B in the area is on Wall Lake.
Oh, sure, it's right next door, so
Which, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you talking about on the lake itself?
One person at a time, please.
It might be easier if you just have one spokesman at a time, thank you.
So you're referring to the one that we are not the managers or owners of? Okay, my belief is that is on the south shore, which would be west of the beach?
But you're not sure for?
No, no, it is west of the beach, yes.
But you're not sure which part, home is?
I don't know the address off the top of my head, but I could get that. It's on the Airbnb app, so you can just look it up on the app, and it'll be right there on the map.
There was some conversation in one of the discussions about potentially having up to 15 guests. Where are the parking accessibility's going to be around that?
We're never gonna have 15 guests. We're only gonna allow six, and that's based on a number of bedrooms. So six peo, six people, that's people, not just adults, plus children, plus guests. That's never gonna happen, because if we have the cameras there and we see people are bringing unauthorized guests to the property, we'll put a stop to immediately, so it's only gonna be six, not sure where 15 came from. But actually, the, I guess we don't have that picture up, but that tennis court picture, like he said, we're taking that down. It's not going to be a parking lot, but right now it does look like one. But the, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of parking, especially for six vehicles. And so, we're also gonna be concerned with keeping that traffic away from the East Shore Place Road. We would never want our guest traffic to block the road. The property, you can tell from this, extends quite far to East Shore Place, so it extends beyond this picture shows, and all of that land there in the, in the eastern parcels could be used for parking at this time.
Couple other questions. Obviously, the sewer system issue has been, let's say, a project problem around the lake in the past with the septic system. If you're adding guests, how are you gonna take care of it other than that hook?
Yeah, no, thanks for asking. We're going to be very communicative about the prob, you know, the possibility of there being an issue. So, first, we're going to let people know in the initial reservation. So when you're on the app and people request a reservation, we're going to tell them right there, just like a text message, like, hey, here's the specific concerns you need to be aware with this, at this property, which, number one, there's no partying, number two, we're not going to allow smoking, number three, you know, no aggressive breeds of animals, number four, the, the sewer has since, sensitivity. And so, when you are disposing of hygienic products, it needs to be in the trash and not directly in the toilet. And that's going to be communicated there. It's also going to be communicated with signage inside the home, so there'll be a sign in the bathroom, please do not dispose hygiene products in the toilet, here's where they should go.
So your answer to solving the problem is communication?
And the hook, yep, absolutely. And also, the, the number of guests at, at six on the property is really, it's, it's, it's manageable. My family and I have utilized the property for years, and, you know, we've had six guests over, and it's never been a problem at the property when we've utilized it. And as, as far as, sorry, go ahead.
I was, my hands were folded.
Joel Gerald.
Are you praying? The other thing I'm confused about, I guess, is you talked about onsite management, and then you said that you would be managing it from Colorado. Which one is it?
Both, yeah, there's four people that'll be involved with this, two live in Sioux Falls and two live in Colorado.
I have a couple
Thank you.
Commissioner Byrne?
Christian, how would you and your mom feel about a restriction like only 30 days or longer rentals?
Yeah, I mean, I could even go less than that, but
Less than 30 days? Well, I think that's what we're
We might do a house rule like that, because a restriction like that would be just fine with us, but a house, our house rules will, will probably be less than a month in, in some fashion. The more actual reservations that we get, the better it will be for the property.
So the answer is, that would be okay?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
That was one of my questions, too, is if there's a limit in the amount of time that they could rent, so I think you've kind of answered that. My other one was just a response to Commissioner Benega's question, that there, it was, this was a deny, but there was a condition, that there can only be six people on that property at a time, so that was a part of the conditions. Commissioner Benega, or Bender, excuse me.
So now I'm confused, I want to clarify, but, Commissioner Barth, were you requesting that, that folks have to rent the property for a minimum of 30 days?
Yeah. A minimum or a maximum? I'm sorry.
Well, I just, that was, I asked if they, how they felt about it, that was my
Okay, so I, I'm not sure that you understood that. He's asking whether you would Okay. So I, I'm not sure that you understood that. He's asking whether you would accept a restriction that says that nobody can rent for less than a 30-day period.
I see. Okay. That would not really fit with the short-term model at all. It would be more like a short-term lease at that point. The longer you have as far as stays, then you, you kind of get into needing a lease territory. So that would be my biggest concern there.
Commissioner Kurski?
Is this on a septic system or on a sewer system?
It's on the sewer, so.
One of the things that I want to make everyone aware of is we are already connected to the sewer in both of our homes. When the sewer was used when my father was still alive, we were out there pretty consistently. My father needed a lot of, you know, care and that type of thing. So it's not like the sewer system is all of a sudden going to be overcapacitated. It's going to be the same number of people, most likely, in the home on a regular basis. So it's not like we're trying to hook up another sewer system. And like he said, there'll be rules and that type of thing in there. But I really don't see that the sewer system is going to be any more overcapacitated than when we were living out there. But I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. And do you have experience?
Jackie's passionate. Mr. Kurski?
Okay. Do you own other Airbnbs or VRBOs and other rental properties? Do you have experience in this business?
Yeah, I'll just say a little bit. My mother has an Airbnb in her home here in Sioux Falls, and we've had that for three months plus. And I'm managing it administratively through the app, and she's kind of a backup on there on the app as well. And then she's already involved with the cleaning and, you know, preparation of.
You're fairly new in the business, but you, okay.
As far as Airbnb, yes. But like I say, I've, I've been in residential property management for 11 years, 11, 12, going on 12. And so there are short-term rentals involved with residential property management.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Christian at this point? Okay. Call you back later, Christian. So then I would look for the opponents.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Steve Howgard. I'm an attorney here in Sioux Falls and also been a real estate broker for the past probably 30 years, 35 years, something like that, just as an add-on to my practice. But also a resident of Minnetonka County. And I'd just like to point out that, you know, as Sioux Falls area has developed, Wall Lake has always been kind of a jewel for the city. It's an opportunity for people to have a lake nearby. Lake Madison's the next one, a little further away. But Wall Lake is just a beautiful area, and, and the development of that has been probably unchecked a little bit as far as homeowners association, all those things that are really active. There's been a presumption that neighbors would just be good neighbors, and they would take care of their properties and do a good job with them. Today's news, I noticed there was an item about Dwayne Struck passed away out by Humboldt. He had his crop in, and there were dozens of neighbors that came and took care of harvesting his crop here in the past few days. And it's that kind of neighborhood that these folks have come to expect in the Wall Lake area. And they've developed nice homes out there, and it's a beautiful area. And they really rely on the goodwill of their neighbors to keep it that way. And I think you all realize, we've been on the commission quite a while, that this whole area is developing so quickly that like Airbnb, Airbnbs and short-term rentals, those types of things, all across the nation, it's become an issue. So the states are all alerted to that. And I suspect there's going to be some sort of legislation that will shake out here in the next years to address some of these things. But for that reason, I would ask the commission to just put the brakes on this, let these folks work with the, the local existing neighbors and try to come up with some sort of a solution, if that's what everybody wants. Or to simply sell the property and move on to something else and invest in property in Sioux Falls that can be used as an Airbnb. Some of the arguments that were made is that they're going to monitor this remotely. And I'm sure they have good intentions, but as far as their resolution to do certain things, that's only as good as being right there on site and making sure that you're not offending your neighbors. And the idea of monitoring by camera and remote monitoring, you, you can't solve the problem immediately. You're not the, the current resident. You don't, those folks that might be renting this property, they're going to be there just to enjoy the time to be in a different location. And they probably don't really care too much if they lose their deposit, or, you know, it might cost them something more, or they get kicked out the next day. So it's, it's not at all like having a neighbor that's on site. And this really does come down to spot zoning. And it really doesn't address the issues that, that are, you're faced here. And if I could have some latitude, I'd combine 11 and 12 districts in response.
Just a little bit. Yep, because we did, I did talk to your attorney about that, and it's probably a good idea. They are going to both eventually hinge upon each other at some point, so.
So the, the assertion that they're not, they're not going to have a problem, that they'll do the remote monitoring, they'll have cameras, they'll have some sort of a backup system with their hooks in the sewer and all that sort of thing. I'm glad they realize it's a highly potential for a problem there. And the fact is, those remote monitoring ideas just aren't the same as having a neighbor and having the expectations and the accountability of neighbors. So I think the homeowners have presented to you a good package of reasons why this isn't going to be a, a good fit for Wall Lake. And as I mentioned, you know, litigation is going on nationwide about Airbnbs. It's significant, and it's significant because it affects the loss of enjoyment of property, loss of value. We all pay taxes on our real estate to make sure that we have adequate safety and schools and, and roadways. In this situation, there's a vacated road out there that's not really clearly established as to who's going to pay for what. And it's something along the same lines as that sewer system. So the sewer system is designed for a certain number of occupants, and I think they've already exceeded that number. So what's left is the goodwill of the individuals there. In this case, the property has not been used a lot in the past few years, and now you're going to see a significant uptick in that use. And we don't have an agreement as far as who's going to pay for what, as far as roads or sewers. And the age of that sewer system is such that it's probably in need of some updates. So you look at that, and you look at the regulations, then in regard to the mobile home use, and I'm sure you're aware of that through this, at least through this package of material, the Minnetonka County regulations in regard to mobile home isn't discretionary. It's with certainty. It talks about regulations regarding mobile homes and manufactured homes shall be as follows. And it identifies what they shall be. And especially where the roads are not publicly dedicated, they shall meet the following minimum standards: minimum size, minimum setbacks, minimum roof composition, size of the lots, a whole number of things, the support basis for this type of mobile home. All those are significant issues in and of themselves. But the real issue is the maintenance of this as a residential community, not as a commercial development. And all of you will be off the board at some point in time, off the commission at some point in time. And when that happens, it's likely that whoever is a recipient of this property down the road, they're going to say, well, Sioux Falls now is at 400,000 people. We really need some additional development out at Wall Lake. And we've got this opportunity to, to have this commercial development now. We'd just like to expand it a little bit. So those requests are likely down the road. And unless you have certainty about what's going to happen now, you're just going to be put upon to see expansion of, of what might be authorized at this time. So I think for long-term planning, I think it's appropriate that the commission deny the uses requested here, and that there be some burden put on the homeowners in the Wall Lake area to get this thing under control on, on their own, for one. And then also for the county to step back and say, we need a longer-term plan here as far as use of properties outside or within Minnetonka County. As I mentioned, the, the outline that was presented to you covers, I think, all the significant issues. It talks about setbacks, sewer systems, road issues, and property values. And I think those are all well-established. And several of us here are connected with real estate. And you know that the use of properties adversely such as this is going to have an impact on the adjoining properties and the other properties in that neighborhood. So the, until there's a plan, until there's a, I think, until there's a well-established homeowners association that controls the use and maintenance of the roads and that sewer system, I think the county commission would wisely decline to expand this use. And I just think that's in the best interest of all involved, all across the whole county. Otherwise, you're going to, as I say, have spot zoning, and it's going to bleed into Lincoln County and Turner County and all the adjoining counties. And I would expect that it'd be wise for the Association of County Commissioners to establish some plans. I'm sure you've discussed these things along the way. But as far as a request like this, I think declining the request, allowing the property to stay as it is, if they want to sell it and invest elsewhere, that'd be wise. But right now, there's no certainty as far as the, the contribution to roads and sewers. So that's a significant issue. But the, I want to just make sure I've addressed the proponents' comments. Now, there is no idea about how often it's going to be occupied. And it was mentioned that the intention here is to have a cottage industry. And that isn't what Wall Lake was about. Wall Lake was about individuals that had a property there that they could enjoy. They could expect that there was going to be some certainty as far as future use by neighbors. And now this opens up a whole different can of worms. And at some point, the county needs to address this more broadly, probably, but you can expect Sioux Falls is expanding dramatically. And if this is allowed, it's likely that's going to be expanded dramatically in the years ahead. So with that in mind, I just ask for you to deny this request and allow the, the association out there to develop, address those issues, but not to develop this into a commercial property at this time.
Are there any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Howgard, it's always great to see you sharing the excitement of our meetings. You know, I threw out the idea of a minimum 30-day stay. Is, is there anything else that would make this proposal more palatable to your, your group?
Well, an expansion like that would cause the individuals living there to be somewhat invested. But as you know, with rentals all across the area, any place in the United States, you get somebody in there, and you don't want them in there, well, there's an eviction process.
Right.
And the eviction process is laborious these days. And too many people know what it's like.
Enough, enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
So you're not suggesting that they couldn't rent this property out long-term if they wanted to?
Well, they can potentially do that right now because it's residential, as long as it maintains that residential feature. That's, that's possible, just in this.
That would have the same issues that you just referenced about evicting a tenant.
Exactly.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Mr. Kurski?
Are there any covenants or restrictions on the property right now that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. You know, I'd like to see, I haven't had the time to look at this. I'd like to see what the deeds look like on these properties, because I'm assuming that at least in years gone by, there was probably a reference to an easement of some sort for road access. But I don't believe there's any certainty as far as the maintenance of the road. And if there is an agreement among the homeowners out there, they could, they could clarify that right now. And those that choose not to be involved would likely be subject to some sort of suit to require that they be involved because they'd have beneficial use.
Okay. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak in opposition?
I'd just like to.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question? Can I ask Kevin a question? Or do you want me to wait?
We're going to wait back to Kevin. Yeah, we'll come back to Kevin. So if there's anybody else for opposition at this?
Jeff Nelson, maybe, who's going to speak.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Jeff Nelson. I've been a real estate broker and educator, real estate educator here in Sioux Falls for the last 45 years. And I have a cold, so I apologize.
Could you just move, move the microphone just up a titch? Because, yep, I can tell that it's not quite there yet.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I speak against this because, not because of any reason probably other than values of homes. That's what, that's what I've been doing for the last 45 years, helping people sell their homes, list their homes, and buy homes. And the most important thing that we can deal with is, is private property rights, so that everybody has the right to use their property as they see fit, as long as it doesn't work to the detriment of any of the other people. We can all imagine our neighbors, the people around us or in the neighborhood that we choose to live in, because it's safe, because it's our home, because we live around other people, we have schools, and we have safety. And all of that's what's built Sioux Falls to what it has built over the last 45 years. Now granted, Airbnbs, bed and breakfast, VRBOs have taken on a huge concentration all over the country. It's one, it's certainly one of the things that I see on the, the periodicals that I read. One of the things, Commissioner Barth, you talk about 30-day rental, and people, there's many cities that have thought that would work, but then all of a sudden, you get a Summit League tournament, or you get a big soccer tournament, or, or you get hunting season. They rent it for 30 days, and in seven days, they're gone. And so now there's the opportunity again to rent it for another 30 days. Not that that would take place here. But what we're on is when you begin to allow this kind of short-term rental into any part of our community, you take away the neighborhood. You take away the safety issues. And while many of the people that are going to rent there have certainly a fair amount of income, because I'm guessing they're going to be expensive, anyone that I've ever seen has been, we allow the neighborhood to change. As far as mobile home goes, I think we all understand to introduce a mobile home into a residential neighborhood is probably not always the best for people's values. So this whole transitional living is not necessarily something that, that's good for anybody's value in the neighborhood. We don't know what that would be until it comes time for them to sell the property, and then that would, that would be determined. There's one last thing if I might add. I serve on the Assessable Housing Advisory Board, as does Commissioner Bender. I regret having, I regret seeing properties being sold for this kind of commerce, when we are essentially 4,000 homes short in the city of Sioux Falls and in this four-county area, even more than that. And with the economy that we're going into now and builders pulling back in the next six to eight months, we're going to be more than 4,000 short. And when we start using a short-term commerce versus long-term rentals or single-family purchases, we're, we're denying somebody that right to own a home. That's an aside here. I have to throw it in just because it's my own personal. We see this all across the country. I serve on the National Association of Realtors State and Local Issues Mobilization Committee, and we aid property rights. But we're seeing this as becoming something that will be huge in the future. And I would hope that there would be a long-range plan for not only the city of Sioux Falls, but from the county as well. I will tell you this, I forgot to tell you where I live. I, I live one block into Lincoln County. So I'm not here. But I've sold in Minnetonka County the whole time. I'm very impressed. I'm very impressed with both of the presentations of Councilor Haugard and Commissioner. Golly, talk about education in real estate. My history degree and driver admire at University of South Dakota don't come anywhere close to what he's doing. This is an important issue. It's a slippery slope. You will be here again. I'll probably be here again as you go through this. Let's not get residents confused with rentals, short-term rentals.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Is there anyone else on the opponent's side that wants to speak at this?
Madam Chair, can I see by show of hands, are the people standing, who is, who are here in opposition to this?
Yeah, who can stand, so just kind of an idea of...
Who's opposed? Okay. You should, yeah, ask them to show their hands. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else on the opposition side, I'm going to give the proponents an opportunity to comment on anything that was commented on that you want to comment back on. And then after that, it'll be commissions. Commissioner Bender, I know, has another question. And if we call you back up, that'd be great. Oh, there's one more opponent that wants to speak, as long as it's something that hasn't been talked about before.
I'm Peggy Pivir, and I do live on the east side of Wall Lake. I just wanted to bring up the fact that we did do, I'm sure in your packet you have it, a poll of the residents that live on the east side of Wall Lake. And eighty-five percent of the residents that are in single-family residential homes strongly oppose this B and B. We already have problems with traffic back there. And I know you're talking about the one issue, the current home being turned into a six-bed B and B. That's true. That's what they're requesting. But the other issue is going to come up here shortly, where they want to put in a mobile home with ten more beds. So that is sixteen possible rental beds they would have. So to say we're only talking about six people, that's not true. It's two parts. It could potentially be sixteen guests, along with their friends also. And a B and B, you know, a six-bed B and B with somebody living in the B and B, monitoring it, making sure they're following the rules, taking care of the facility, is a lot different than monitoring with cameras and sound machines. That's completely different. And the B and B that he referenced, his mother currently runs, she lives in the home, and it's like two or three bedrooms from what she presented the first time. That's a big difference than what they're proposing out at Wall Lake. Not only do eighty-five percent of the residents on the east side of Wall Lake oppose the establishment of a B and B, we also polled the west side and the south side, and we have an eighty percent that don't want a B and B out there either. We don't want any more people driving around, looking at, we already have a lot of problems with people driving through, trying to see if there's properties for sale, just looking at the lake. And it's only going to cause more people to be coming into the Wall Lake area. It's a quiet residential area. We're safe, the kids are safe out there, and then you're going to have renters, short-term renters, coming and going all the time. And in her first presentation, she said she was looking at an eighty percent occupancy, not sixty percent. They were hoping for eighty percent occupancy is what she said at the first meeting with the Planning and Zoning Committee. So I just want to let you know that we, as taxpayers and people that live out there, do not want this B and B dropped into our neighborhood. Spot zoning is what we call it. And once you get past, if you look at the definition of a B and B, once you get past six residents, it becomes a specialty resort. And when you have two buildings on the one building site, and you're renting to sixteen people potentially, that is a specialty resort. It is no longer a B and B, and there will be nobody living out there to monitor it. And to think that you can monitor it from Colorado...
Peggy, thank you. We have had a lot of those things already, but thank you. Is there any questions for Peggy? Yeah, and we do have a copy of all the people who signed, so thank you. If there are no more questions for the Commission?
Madam Chair, I would just point out that all of the documentation we've received on this, and there's quite a bit, will be kept on file here.
And it's also been read by the Commissioners. Okay, so we're going to go back to the proponents for any rebuttal of comments that were made.
So, yes, Wall Lake is a jewel, and a couple people mentioned us selling the property. And that's why we're here today. We don't want to sell the property. This has been in our family now for generations, and it's, there's been a ton of memories made there, and that's all we're trying to do, is allow more memories to be made. And that's not just for the guests of the Airbnb. We would still be utilizing the property. Our plans are also that my mother could retire there after a few years of this. And, you know, we, my wife and I, want to hang on to this property forever. We do not want to sell it at any point. And that could be, you know, our future retirement home. Like, this is an investment in us and in this property and in this community. So there are a few ulterior motives, I believe, that are here, because I know that there's people here that want to purchase the property as well. If we are not able to have this, you know, permit approved for the property, there is a possibility it could sit vacant, and that is the worst thing that could happen for the community. So I don't think that that's an ideal situation for anyone. Legislation on Airbnb as was brought up, some of the, you know, a location that was mentioned, and also mentioned by the attorney here, that banned Airbnbs, the only reason they banned it was because of the housing shortage. That is an actual, you know, issue. However, if you're going to argue on one hand that this is about property values decreasing, and then on the other hand, say that there's a housing shortage, those two things don't go together at all, and the property value is only going to increase. We also were told that we wouldn't be able to solve the problem immediately. In your information packet that we gave, there's information about us hiring a third-party courtesy patrol company, Signal Eighty-Eight. They have a presence in Sioux Falls. They patrol the city, and we would be able to contact them twenty-four-seven, and they would come out immediately and handle any issue that actually, you know, warranted their presence. But like I said from the beginning, we're here for prevention and not to react. And so I will give the comments about the sewer updates. In the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was a comment from one of the Commissioners that we should apply for federal funding. I'd be happy to help apply for that. And then, again, the Planning and Zoning staff did recommend this. The cottage industry terminology was the wrong thing to say. Again, this is our family property, and we're going to treat it like our vacation home, and we're going to let our guests stay there. It's not transitional living. I'm not sure what that is. But one other thing I wanted to mention is that the property on the north side, directly next to the cabin, so if you look, there's the red square, that's the house, then above that is the garage, then above that is our cabin. And then the next property to the north is the property of Bob Heff. He's not here today, you know, but there's been, you know, no concern on his part of showing up and mentioning any issues with this proposal. So, you know, the entire north side of that photo is okay with this, and that's, in my opinion, the only properties that could ever really even interact or see anything on the property, so.
Any questions for Christian? Commissioner Kersky?
Would you address the number of occupants? It's been said somewhere between six and sixteen, so just trying to get a full grip on that.
No, there will not be sixteen at the property whatsoever. There's six people, not just six adults, six people that will be allowed at the property at one time.
And the property next door could have how many?
That had nine, according to our regulations. They could have nine. That's what it said.
According to the regulations.
According to our regulations, it can set up a maximum of nine. So that could always be changed.
What's it designed for, though?
Yeah, the house rules, it's two bedrooms.
Shh, Jackie, let him talk.
There's two bedrooms in the house, and then the, since we are talking about the proposed structure, the one that we're proposing is three bedrooms, but, you know, it could only be a two-bedroom structure there as well. So three bedrooms and two bedrooms is five total bedrooms on the combined parcels of the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Christian? Commissioner Bender?
Just to be clear, five bedrooms equals ten people total between the two properties?
So at the lake house, there would be six, six people, and then at the cabin, up to six people as well. So total of twelve possible on the total combined property.
Okay, thank you, Christian.
If you excuse me, I might jump in here. So the staff recommendation at the beginning of this, when I wrote the staff report, had three people per bedroom in occupancy. So this particular permit, the seventy-one, had a recommendation for six people as a requirement, as a condition of approval. And then the mobile home, which has three bedrooms, have up to nine people. That can be changed as part of the approval process here. You could say maximum six people allowed.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Commissioner Bender, did you have another question for Kevin that I put off on you?
Yeah, Kevin, I just wanted, there was some question about the manufacturing home and whether it met our ordinances. Can you just comment on that?
Yes, so the county ordinance does allow manufactured homes within the rural residential zoning district. It does require a conditional use permit. There are criteria involved, and without it being right in front of me, I'm going off memory, but it involves roof pitch. I think it's a three-twelve minimum roof pitch. It involves that the structure must be twenty-two feet wide. This is a double-wide structure, so it would meet that twenty-two feet wide requirement. And it requires that the, it has a permanent footing underneath the structure, so, and that's a pure footing. It can be wrapped in a skirt. It doesn't have to be a foundation like a regular house. That was all part of a change that was made a couple of years ago.
Any other questions for Kevin? Commissioner Kersky?
So is this why this is a conditional use permit hearing, is simply because it's going to be a manufactured home replacing a manufactured home?
We're not doing the manufactured home right now. We're doing the other one.
I know, but why, Fuzzy, why is this a CUP?
As I stated earlier in the meeting, so this is a short-term rental, and when this first came to staff several years ago now, when Airbnb became a presence in the county, it was a determination of either we allow short-term rentals everywhere, or we don't allow them, because short-term rentals is not listed in our ordinance. So we as staff made the classification that a short-term rental is similar to a bed-and-breakfast because they're renting out the house, and that way we have this conditional use permit hearing to determine if any particular property has, is suitable for the use.
So this is the Planning Commission's office determination that it should be here because you guys just determined that an Airbnb should have this process? Am I hearing it properly?
Kind of, yes. Because if it's not in the ordinance, we have to make that determination. We have permitted approximately, I don't know, six or seven similar Airbnb rental units throughout the county. Some of them are, were permitted in whole-house rental, vacation home styles like this. A couple others have had people living in the house and renting out a portion of the house.
Kind of an aside to that comment, I feel this is, that's the type of thing that really should come before the Commission in the form of an ordinance, not just a staff decision that this is what we're going to do. I prefer to see, going forward, that there's be some rules promulgated on this, because we don't have any rules, and we're kind of allowing you guys to set the rules and the standards, and I think we should, as a commission body, be the ones that, when it comes to this type of thing, make that determination, so.
Commissioner Kersky, I would say there is a determination. There is no ordinance for Airbnbs or part-time rentals.
Exactly.
And so that automatically puts it into a conditional use permit, just like many other things in our ordinances that are conditional use permits. And so if we want an ordinance on Airbnbs and rentals and that type of stuff, then we'll need to work on one.
If I may, Madam Chair, just, we can do our attorney. Is that true, that if it's not an ordinance, it automatically becomes a conditional use permit?
Freeze that lady, no, not automatic. If there are looks about what Kevin's pointing out, if you follow the requirement.
Sorry.
Here, tell everybody else to turn the mic on in the night. For the record, Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. Again, the question, as phrased, no, that's not an automatic. But as planning is articulated, there are certain items that are listed and others that fall under general classifications that the Planning and Zoning Office has required to follow a certain process, and this is required here to obtain a hearing for the input that we were seeing this morning and what the Planning Board saw earlier.
I guess I feel like we're making up the rules as we go along in this circumstance, and maybe I'm totally off-base, but it's an interesting process. Two houses away from my home that I built three years ago, the house came up for sale this last summer, and it sold relatively quickly. Come to find out, it's going to be a rental property. Well, nobody in our neighborhood, our HOA, was happy about that, but they said it's okay. It's going to be a long-term rental, minimum of six months. I, my perspective is, I'd rather have a short-term rental and deal with short-term problems than long-term problems. The eviction process is cumbersome and very difficult, but if somebody's there for three days, they're gone in three days, even if they cause a problem for three days. So I'm really kind of mixed up and torn on this one, and look forward to the rest of the conversation, I guess.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just would point out that the key point in the story you just told is that your neighborhood has a homeowners' association, and they have made agreements in how they want to organize and what rules they want to apply to themselves, and that is lacking here.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to turn it over to the Commission, so we've heard all the testimony that there is. And just to remind you again that this does hinge a little bit on what property that's next door, and we'll be hearing that one next. I'm looking for comments.
Madam Chair, there are two hundred thousand Minniac residents not in this room, and so, you know, we do respectfully listen to everybody on an issue like this. So what do those other tens of thousands want us to do? And, you know, after listening to all of the comments, the documentation on both sides, I think they probably don't want this to happen. And I'll, when the time comes, make a motion to deny this.
Just some comments.
It would be, it would be good if Commissioner Barth would explain why he thinks that two hundred thousand people don't want the Airbnb on Wall Lake.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily the case, but I do believe that, you know, the statement that they have, you know, twenty signatures or eighty signatures from the neighbors doesn't necessarily rule the decisions that we make. It does not make the decision for Airbnbs across the county. There is this one situation, and I think it's been shown that it's probably uncomfortable at this location, and at this point, I'm going to oppose it.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I would, I mean, I would say that I'm also struggling with this. I think that we've had a lot of conversation as a commission about private property rights. That's come up this morning a little bit. And generally, I'm a proponent of private property rights. I would say that, you know, we all have our own stories, and it all, when something affects you directly, it's very personal. I live in an area, I live in a rural area between Sioux Falls and Brandon, and that is changing dramatically. I've had the privilege of driving by cows on my way to work, and I've had a lovely road that has had minimal traffic on it, and now there are houses being built everywhere. Jeff and I, as he mentions, sit on the Accessible Housing Board, where we are working on low-income housing. The city of Sioux Falls approved a TIF last night. on low-income housing. The city of Sioux Falls approved a TIF last night, um, to promote accessible housing, affordable housing, uh, happens to be in my neighborhood. And it's going to dramatically change the traffic flows, the number of people in my neighborhood. I've, I shed a little tear every time I drive home and see all the roads that are being cut out onto Madison, the road I travel every day. Um, so, no, I'm not super excited about that. Um, but my, I always think my option is, is I could have bought all that land, maybe if somebody had left me those millions of dollars. Um, I didn't do that. So, those people have the right to utilize that property in the way that they see fit. Um, and that is what I'm really struggling with here. Um, I, I also live in a neighborhood where we did not have a road maintenance agreement, but it was private roads. And we spent years trying to get all the neighborhood neighbors together because they were gravel roads and, and we were trying to get them paved. And it was not a fun process and it was not an easy process. But we do now finally have an agreement with everybody in our neighborhood for how we share in the costs and what the rules are of, you know, the weight limits and things like that. And, um, you know, we could be saved being here today if Wall Lake neighborhood, east side of Wall Lake, somebody had put together a neighborhood association before now, uh, to address how you want to mutually, um, support and, and enhance your neighborhood, what the rules you think are acceptable. And I have a hard time sitting here when we've approved other Airbnbs, not approving this one. And so, that, that's what I'm really struggling with right now.
I personally have some issues with, I think this is spot zoning. Uh, the remote supervision doesn't meet my criteria of, uh, being onsite and taking care of problems on, uh, necessary time period. I'm still convinced there's parking issues because we're talking about anywhere from nine to twelve to sixteen. It doesn't make any difference. It's not set for that many parking spots. The sewer system's an issue. The roads and maintenance are an issue. At some point, we're going to be responsible for taking over that if it becomes a big problem, if they don't put together a homeowners' association. Property values, uh, I probably agree with Jeff that there, Nelson, that there is going to be some issues with property values because of the roads and sewer system issues. So, I'm going to deny the motion.
You had to say Nelson after you said Jeff.
Well, I didn't want anybody to be confused.
Mr. Anderson has a comment.
Um, as you move forward on, Scott Anderson, Planning Director, as you move forward, uh, making your decision, I just wanted to remind you that the recommendation that you're reviewing today is the Planning Commission recommended to deny this. So, your, your options are to uphold the Planning Commission's decision, which would deny it, the request, or you can overturn the Planning Commission's decision and approve it. I just wanted to remind you that this word came to you as a recommended denial from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Kurski?
Yeah, travel, not a lot, but frequently enough. And we use Airbnbs and VRBOs and always nice properties. Um, we were at one in Florida this last June and had an issue, called the property manager, the owner actually, and he was there within a few hours to, um, fix what was going on. I don't even remember, remember the problem, but he was right there. Local ownership and took care of things. I, and I really fail to see the issue with making or permitting this. And I, I'm struggling with the whole permitting thing. I, I don't see where this is our issue at this point, other than the fact that it was given to us and now it is. Um, where short-term rental is a problem for a property like this. We're not erecting a six-story hotel. We've got a home that's been there for some time. And allowing people the opportunity to, again, create memories. It might be a weekend, it might be a week, maybe it's two weeks. I mean, if we want to put some conditions on it, you know, as to no more than thirty days, or I'm, I'm not in favor of no less than thirty days. I'd be on, more on the other side of no more than thirty days, no more than six, um, occupants, um, that type of thing. I'd, I'd be in favor of that. Maybe some more restrictions on it. But I'm gonna vote to oppose the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Are we ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Um, I'll just make a quick comment. Um, and that is that going forward...
No means yes.
One of the things I would like to see us discuss as a planning, um, commission, in a commission, is that maybe licenses or conditional use permits like this have an end, like a, like a liquor license, and so they could be reviewed, particularly if they're, people are concerned about them. And so, maybe they go, you know, they have, just thinking off the top of my head, um, maybe they have a conditional use permit for two years with review by the, you know, so the neighbors would have an opportunity to speak again about it and see if everything was, obviously, the commission can go in at any time and look at it. But if there's a renewal on licenses for short-term rentals like this, at least it would be more, um, more on the top of what the commission was actually looking at, or at least the Planning and Zoning would review it because they'd go through the whole cycle again. And there would be a renewal of that conditional use permit. Um, I also am going to jump on Commissioner Band, Commissioner's bandwagon, Commissioner Bender's bandwagon about the road maintenance group and a homeowners' association or a covenant. You guys, you already have gotten together. This is something you should do. If you want to keep your communities in a certain way, you need to have something like that to protect yourselves and not bring it to us. And I mean, when I started reading all this information, that was the first thing I thought of is where's your homeowners' association or your covenant? I'm having a really hard time with this one too, because I recognize, I've used Airbnbs. I like them. Um, I've had cameras all over, but I will say that I stayed at a wonderful property recently and we had a little issue and we never got any response on it after I left. But we were able to take care of the issue ourselves. So, it wasn't a huge deal. But when you do have a problem, you want to be able to contact people. I'm going to vote no on this only because eighty percent of the people are so opposed to this. And I think that, I don't know how it's going to go for sure. Pretty sure I know how it's going to go. I think you need to work with your neighbors and figure out how you could make it work. Um, having us come here and oppose eighty percent of the neighborhood is uncomfortable to me. And so, um, I definitely am back and forth too. So, I think I'm looking for a motion. I'm also looking at my attorney. So, maybe not. Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Unless Commissioner Bender has a comment? Yep.
I'll make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny.
I'll second that.
And a discussion? Have to do a real call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Kurski?
No.
Hi, Burger?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. All right, we're going to move on to the next one, which is Appeal Number Twelve. Um, appeal the decision of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve the conditional use permit twenty-two dash seventy-two to allow a bed and breakfast establishment to replace an existing dwelling with a manufactured dwelling. Kevin?
All right, uh, I am back. I'm gonna bring up the next item here. All right, so, uh, conditional use permit, uh, twenty-two seventy-two. This is similar and related to the last one we just heard. Uh, the petitioner is requesting to allow a bed and breakfast establishment on the property and to allow manufactured dwelling to replace the existing cabin on the property. Um, and you can see here, the subject property is immediately north of where the last property was, is this long area here. Um, the, the Planning Commission, uh, heard this item on September twenty-sixth as well. Uh, and this item was, had an approved by the Planning Commission with five votes for approval and one vote for denial. Um, and that was with both the, the Airbnb and the manufactured house on the site. Uh, or the Airbnb would be in the manufactured house. Uh, it was, uh, I, I do recall, uh, telling the commission at that time that as this had, kind of has two parts, uh, you are capable of amending the approval and say approving one aspect of it and denying the other aspect of it, um, if that's what you so choose, um, say, uh, yeah. Um, let's see what other information do I want to include? Uh, yeah, otherwise, the same, the similar requests. So, Airbnb where there's no meals are going to be served by the petitioner, uh, and the petitioner will be living off-site. Uh, the manufactured dwelling is, uh, allowed with an approved conditional use, as we discussed, uh, with the requirements of the ordinance with roof pitch and wideness, um, and foundation. Um, and as I stated, the, uh, permit was approved. So, you have the decision to uphold the approval, deny or amend the Planning Commission's decision and then go with public comment.
I have one question, just because I think I blanked out when I was thinking about this a second. So, do we have to approve both the bread and bed and breakfast concept and the fact that it can be a mobile home or a, do we have to approve that?
Uh, so you can, so it's one application. So, you can kind of divide out the parts. So, if you wanted to follow, uh, the previous permit, say, not allow the Airbnb, you could say, we're not going to allow that, but we will allow the manufactured house. Um, I can bring up the conditions, uh, for the permit. So, the conditions, there's eight conditions. And that, the, the main, uh, differentiating condition on the manufactured house is condition number two. The manufactured home must meet all required setbacks and requirements of Article twelve point oh six of the county zoning ordinance. And then, uh, many of the other conditions or the other conditions are relating to the Airbnb on the property.
Thank you. So, could, could actually be two different motions. Could actually be that we need to prove the house, but not prove any Airbnb. Or you could approve an Airbnb with no house.
So, to be clear, the condition is that they follow the rules of, that are already in place?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood that.
Okay, so this is a public hearing and we will start again with the proponents, comments, and then the opponents. And a lot of this information we've heard. So, I don't know if you want to have anything, if you have anything additional to say, Christian?
Okay, so now that the house has been denied, um, we're left with the cabin. So, again, the cabin is even more separated from neighbors than the house, uh, except we have Bob Hep right there, um, who is not opposed to this decision. And so, um, there was, you know, a comment about my mother, you know, not being able to spend enough time here. I just want to mention that she's a substitute teacher, a part-time substitute teacher right now. And she would likely, uh, be, uh, accepting less assignments to take care of this property. Um, the fact that we're, we're not talking about the house anymore means we're talking about six people. Um, it's, it's going to be extremely easy to manage. Um, your concern that I need to get with the neighbors is totally valid. And I one hundred percent agree with that. Um, I think the bottom line that there's opposition whatsoever is a misunderstanding of Airbnb and what it is and, uh, 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 no confidence in, in our ability to manage the property. Uh, otherwise, I, I don't see, you know, what the issue, uh, could be. And what I think that means is the onus is on us. It's, it's on us to show everyone that we can manage this and that it's going to be a great thing not, for the community, not just a good thing. It's going to be a great thing. Property values are going to go up. There's going to be a hospitality option in the community, which is, there's not one in the area whatsoever right now. And so, this, uh, permit allows us that demonstration. And so, if, if we have the opportunity to show our neighbors that it is going to be a good thing, and there is already set in place, uh, the possibility for reviews, if there is an issue that comes up, it can be, uh, you know, complained or, or, um, we can be checked on, just like you mentioned. And, uh, then this is a conditional use permit. It can be taken away. So, to not give us the opportunity to, um, you know, demonstrate that we are one hundred percent capable and we will be, you know, this will be a good thing for the neighborhood, um, then we won't have that ability to turn the eighty percent into five percent. Um, it's, it's, they, they own homes on this property. They live in vacation homes one hundred percent of the time. So, they're never going to go to an Airbnb and get that experience that is so good. So, uh, they don't, you know, necessarily understand exactly what we're trying to do. But with the opportunity to demonstrate our, our, uh, our plan here, I think that's how we're going to get more, uh, unified in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Christian. Yep. Nope, you got to come to the podium and address yourself again.
Jackie Tom's, um, twenty-eight sixty East Old Orchard, two-six-five-five-seven and two-six-five-five-nine East Shore. I want to, um, comment on Commissioner Benegas. Uh, worry about the parking. There is no problem with the parking. And I wish we could get the picture up of the manufactured home that we gave to you guys so that the neighbors could see that because it's a pretty nice home. But you can't, it's not in his.
It's, I don't think it's in his pocket. It's in the one that...
Anyway, the parking, you, you come across the road and then you go across that long pole barn. That's not the picture. Um, you come across a long pole barn and then they would park where that tennis court is. There would not be any on-street parking. All the parking would be up. We have a garage that has a two-car driveway in it. And then right next to it, across the way, we have an entire, like, lot that would provide parking. And then the other thing would be, you know, everyone's worried about having sixteen people or ten people parking. Typically, if a person comes in with six people, it's going to be like a mom and dad and a couple of kids. So, we're not, we're not looking at six adults coming in and staying there each with a car. They'll probably have one car, maybe two cars at the most. Um, and there'll be off-street parking. You won't even, they won't even know that they're there because the pole barn is there, which, you know, is, I don't know how many thirty, how many, thirty feet, thirty-foot pole barn that they have to drive past to get to the home. So, there's not going to be any noise. And the only other thing is, is that we share the driveway, um, on the other side of the property with the Heps. And that's an access into the lake, which is not a public access, which I know was addressed in their comments. Um, because I called the Department of Equalization. I have, uh, document from the Register of Deeds showing that that was a vacated road quite some time ago. And like I said, we share that with Bob Hep, with the Hep family. And they don't have any problem with it either. And we did have someone in there renting it this last summer, or, yeah, last summer and the summer before, in the cabin. So, and Lori Lanfer actually asked me if she could allow her, if she would allow me to have her employee rent the brick house, um, because it would be more convenient for her to have her employee right next to her. So, she asked me if we could rent it. That was a couple of years ago when my dad first moved in.
Let's stay, let's stay on task here.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other comments from the?
Just wanted to resolve the parking.
Christian?
And just a reminder about parking too, is that you were concerned about two properties having parking. Now, it's just one.
Okay. Any other proponents? I think that was Christian's it, and then opponents?
Well, thank you very much for your attention to this issue. And I appreciate the sensitivity of it. Um, as far as the bed and breakfast side, same arguments, hope for the same results. As far as the mobile home, uh, use or manufactured home use, if you refer to, uh, Section twelve point zero six of the Additional Use Regulations, you'll see that in Section A, it talks about a park intended for placement of mobile homes or manufactured homes. In Section B, it talks about a subdivision for mobile homes or manufactured homes. about a subdivision for mobile homes or manufactured homes. That's, that's a whole different category. Uh, Mr. Bo can expand on that. As far as what appears to be the historical intention of this was that this is intended for, uh, a larger spread of several of these manufactured homes or mobile homes. And when you get down to Section C, that, I think, really addresses the idea that a manufactured home may be considered for conditional use as specified in the district. It talks about what that manufactured home would look like, and even the one in the picture, uh, that might just be sitting on a lot for display or sale or something. But the regulations themselves require that both the piers and the foundational walls be 42 inches below grade. So, it's, there might be some confusion part of the applicants for this. You look at Section D then, and that's where you address the idea that mobile homes, which are non-conforming uses, may be replaced with another such structure. And that's where you run into the, uh, existing mobile homes that are scattered around the county. And I know that's, uh, it's very sensitive there to make sure that, that if that's gonna be replaced, or updated, or upgraded, that, uh, that'd be done quickly, and that'd be done to conform with these rules and regulations. So, as I point out, the first sections are talking about the idea of developing a, a whole, uh, neighborhood of manufactured homes or mobile homes, and that doesn't fit with what's being requested here. This request can be completely different, going from an existing structure to, uh, temporary structure or manufactured structure. And as I point out, Section D covers that. And that Section D is really contemplating a situation where you've got, uh, an existing mobile home that's been grandfathered in over the years, and now you're gonna ask to do something to replace it. So, in this situation, it doesn't fit, I don't think it fits within 12.06, and therefore, I'd ask you to deny that too.
Thank you. Anyone else on the opponent's side? Anybody on the proponent's side want to rebuttal that? I'm having our state's attorneys looking quick, so.
Yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission did already, not only the, the staff recommended it, but the commission already approved it. Um, the manufacturer of the home deals with this stuff all the time, and that's their job to make sure that these homes comply with what the zoning, what the, uh, you know, building code require. And so, uh, everything will be up to standard with this home. Um, he mentioned they're needing to be a trailer park. We do not want, you know, our property to be a trailer park. It's, it's a one-for-one replacement, and I think that's really, uh, what the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, was, was on board for. It's, it's replacing a decaying structure with a brand-new structure with better utilities, with better, um, uh, you know, just overall structure to the home. Uh, so, it's, it's going to be night and day. Um, some of the pictures I've put in my materials, um, just show that it's, it's going to look so much more congruent with the surrounding structures than what's currently there.
Thank you, Christian.
Yeah, question?
No, oh, yeah. Any questions for Christian? Okay, I'm waiting to see if Eric has any comments.
Madam Chair, Eric Boe, State's Attorney's Office. Uh, I think the intention of planning and zoning, and Kevin certainly can correct me, was the reference to 12.06C, uh, the, the additional setback requirements and not the park requirements that, uh, Mr. Hargard's referring to. So, um, there is additional sub portions of that, that section, and that's the intent of the, the, uh, conditions listed by the, the department when they originally recommended approval, with those conditions to be satisfied. So, uh, and certainly if you want some additional clarification from the department, that would be fine.
Kevin, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, and, and I apologize, I did not, uh, bring that copy of the ordinance with me, but yes, it is that 12.06C, because, uh, we're not developing a new manufactured home park. Uh, this is not a, a, uh, new development where there's gonna be separate lots with separate manufactured house, and we're not replacing the existing home. Uh, this is, uh, an allowed u, use, um, uh, through the conditional use permit process, um, is according to the ordinance with the requirements of 12.06C.
Okay. Comments and thoughts from the commissioners? Manufactured home will be considered under a conditional use permit. That's what he's referencing.
Madam Chair?
Christian.
We're replacing a manufactured home with a manufactured home, correct?
No, it's a, it's a cabin.
We're replacing a home with a manufactured home that meets all the requirements for replacement of a manufactured home. The condition is that it is a manufactured home. Yeah, I couldn't tell if that was manufactured or added to or not. It's an old home that definitely needs a little TLC. Um, so the condition is it's a manufactured home being placed that meets all the requirements of our manufactured home ordinance, except for it's a manufactured home, you know, replacing a non-manufactured home. It's confusing. Okay.
There's no comments, thoughts? It's not against our ordinance to have a manufactured home. Turn it back on.
Thought I turned it on, sorry. I think legally, uh, we're following our own ordinances by approving this particular motion. Am I right, Eric?
Madam Chair, Eric Boe, State's Attorney's Office, again. I, I think, I'd ask Planning to get me the original application, 'cause I think the question is, is integral as to whether or not you wish to split the original application, 'cause the original application, by the proponents in this case, was both to, uh, excuse me a second, I'm gonna pop up, um, both for the Airbnb and to replace existing cabin structure. So, they applied for both things at the same time. So, you could reject the Planning Commission's decision to approve this, both components, or you'd have to choose to separate the two components. I don't think you're required to separate them, though. You could, if you wished not to approve the mobile home aspect or the Airbnb aspect, reject the whole thing, because that's how it was brought to the Planning Board originally.
Or you could approve just the mobile home without the Airbnb.
Madam Chair, at that point, you'd actually be amending the, the Planning Board's decision, because they accepted it as presented by the original application.
I'm gonna be consistent in this one, and I will support the replacement of the home with a modular home that meets all the requirements of our, our existing ordinance, and I will support the Airbnb at the location also. Uh, again, just to be consistent with my last vote.
Is that a motion?
That's what I was just gonna get around to. Thank you. So, my motion is to, and I'm not too sure where we're voting to.
You'd be accepting the Planning and Zoning's further, or, or, original motion to approve the, no, to approve, 'cause they wanted to approve the mobile home and the Airbnb.
So, the Planning Commission voted to approve this one, but not the other one. Okay, so this is, again, getting muddy.
Yeah.
So, my motion would be to approve the, or uphold the Planning Commission's decision for the placement of the home and an air, and an Airbnb.
And I will second that motion.
Further discussion?
I find this, uh, whole process confusing, to be blunt. Um, the real issue is, if we could've deferred this and asked them to form a homeowners' association and got everybody on board on the same page, we probably could've avoided some of this, anyway. Um, my question to the, to Christian, who owns the tennis court that you were talking about, and who owns the, um, storage unit, or whatever you're calling that, pole barn?
We, we own all the parcels on the property. There's six parcels.
Right.
And the tennis court is on that. There's a, um, pole barn is what we're calling it, storage facility. And then also across East Shore Place, we own an acre on that side of the property as well. So, um, this cabin is very insulated in every direction.
Thank you.
I am going to, um, not support this, only because I will support the replacement of the home, but with my same last comment was that I'm not going to support the Airbnb until they've worked with their neighbors. Um, that doesn't mean they can't work with the neighbors. They can't come up with a plan and come back and talk again. And in January of 2023, we're for sure gonna have two new commissioners. So, I don't know what that looks like either. Um, I will support replacing the home, because I think that that needs to be done, and I don't think, according to our ordinances, that we really have good legs to stand on. So. We have a motion and a second on the table. You ready to vote? Call for roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Benago.
No.
Hyburger.
No. So, the motion is two to two, so it fails. So, is there additional?
Subsequent motion?
Subsequent motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the placement of the mobile home and deny the conditional use permit for the Airbnb.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay. I'm looking for purposes of discussion here, people.
I, I personally think they made it one proposal. It was a package deal, so I'm not gonna promote, I'm not gonna support a piecemeal, um, proposal. They can come back with a new proposal if they want to.
You ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
No.
Benago.
No.
Hyburger.
No. Motion fails. So, there's nothing on that property. Um, the motion was three to one, and so you just have to come back with a new proposal, or work with your neighbors. So, we have to have a motion to reject the Planning and Zoning's proposal. So, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion for purposes of discussion.
Second.
Motion is second. Purpose of the discussion, Commissioner Kerski.
You know, I find it, uh, disingenuous is the proper word, but they approved one with an Airbnb, and they voted to deny the other one. That's just so inconsistent, and that's why we need more rules for Airbnbs. I mean, we, we seem to be, you know, if you wanna call it spot zoning, or whatever you wanna call it, but really, who knows if there's an Airbnb? We have no registration process. We don't know if a property's an Airbnb. You could have a farm out in the middle of the country that's an, you know, an Airbnb and have people come and visit, 'cause they want the farm experience. Um, we're inconsistent in what we're doing here, and we need to have something done by our planning office that brings consistency to this whole process.
I will not disagree with what you just said. I think they brought it as one system, so to speak. I think we have to treat it as one system, and, um, again, I would hope that the landowners and the potential, uh, changes that could, could happen around the lake, um, form some sort of homeowners' association and try to make it work. I'm not, no, I do not know what that is. I don't own property around there. I believe in, um, homeowners' rights, land rights, but this is way too confusing not to do what we've just done.
So, we have a motion and a second to deny, deny the Planning Commission's decision to let this project go forward. Roll call vote.
Thunder.
Yeah, we gotta make sure we have it right.
I, I am gonna vote no on this, to be consistent with how I've been voting, I think.
No, I'm confused. If we vote no, then we're upholding, or we're, if we vote no, then we're, uh, we're disagreeing with the Planning Commission, correct?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, given the question, I'm less clear than I should be on what the motion is.
The motion is to deny the Planning Commission's decision to let them move forward.
Okay, so, um...
So, if you vote yes, you've denied the planning, correct?
You, you've overturned that, yes.
Okay.
And the previous, just, Madam Chair, for, for historical purposes for today, that the previous motion to uphold the Planning Commission's approval failed on a two-two vote. So, we're in a little bit of limbo, 'cause you've already sent a message that you do not support the Planning Commission's prior decision. To make that official, it would be more intellectually honest to, to now make it clear with a vote to reject the Planning Board's decision.
Right. So, we want...
That was what my question was, is like, so if we get another two-to-two vote here, which seems to me to be the consistent thing for us to do, what happens? That was what I was trying to get clarification on.
And it would be denied again, if it's a two-two vote.
So, nothing's...
Oh, I'm really confused. So, our motion was to deny acceptance. So, if you vote a yes, you're denying the planning.
Overturning.
You're overturning, is overturning. If you say no, you're letting the project go forward.
Correct.
If it fails as a two-to-two, it goes forward. Is that what you're telling me?
Madam Chair, I'd really rather not tell you anything, but, uh...
Oh.
Just on a pure parliamentary issue, unfortunately, we're missing a member right now.
Right.
It would be better for the process to have an affirmative vote, one direction or the other. Um, we, again, we've already had one motion to uphold the planning fail on a two-two. So, something needs to happen.
Can we take, defer a vote on this until next week?
I would like to defer this.
I frankly don't know how to vote, 'cause I don't understand where we're at.
So, can I withdraw my motion?
Yes.
And make a new motion?
Yes.
I would like to withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer until next week.
I'll second that.
The motion is second to defer for one week. Roll call vote.
Thunder.
Aye.
Benago.
Absolutely.
Kerski?
Yes.
Hyburger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This one has been deferred to next week. Um, I'm wondering how the commission feels about a five-minute break. I feel really bad for you people who have sat here for, um, two and a half hours and still have a lot of agenda to go. Um, so, if we could just have a restroom break for five minutes, if you would just be really speedy. We are at 11:37, so, let's say 11:45, I will be moving forward. That's a little bit more than five minutes. No, I'm glad you did that, Jean. It's a long state.
Five minutes to.
License on it, but then it was removed later. Um, that is, uh, photos of the license plates here. Uh, and that's really where we are at on the property. Uh, so unlicensed, uh, and inoperable vehicles are defined in the county, uh, nuisance ordinance as abandoned property. Uh, South Dakota codified law twenty-one-ten-six allows Minnehaw County to declare a public nuisance and allow the county to clean up the property and defray the cost to the property owner. Uh, so staff is requesting that Minnehaw County Commission declare the property, uh, legally described as the west two feet of the south fifteen feet lot two, and all lot one attract seven voits subdivision of public nuisance, uh, and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one-ten-six. And, uh, there's a public hearing, so I'm available for questions.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there, um, the person who owns this property here to speak? No. Is there anyone who wants to speak against this property? Okay, commission? There's no one here. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this? Commissioner Kerski?
Make a motion to declare a public nuisance and, um, give the property owner thirty days to clean up.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to declare a public nuisance and thirty days to get it cleaned up. Otherwise, we will have somebody out to remove those pieces of property. A roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hamburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is a public hearing to consider declaration of the property legally described as east two-hundred-and-forty-five feet and the south two-hundred-and-ten feet of the southeast, one quarter southeast, one quarter, except the H-one, H-two, and H-three in section ten dash township one oh, four north range fifty west Burke Township as a nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one verse dash ten dash six. Kevin?
All right, this property is located approximately four miles west of Del Rapids at four-six-nine-nine-eight-two-hundred-and-forty-sixth street. Uh, this property has been in front of the county commission before, uh, in which case cleanup was last time was done by the property owner. Uh, and then, uh, kind of came back again this spring. I'll bring up the photos again. Uh, so you'll see some of the, oh wait, that's not, there's just some photos that was sent to the property owner. Um, and then I have the PowerPoint here. Um, you can see the aerial imagery from twenty-twenty. And here's what it looked like, uh, in July of this year. Uh, the property owner throughout the summer, uh, has done some work on the property. Uh, I will note as I scroll through here, uh, that these outside, many of these outside vehicles have been licensed. Uh, they also appear to be operable. Um, but there is still, uh, stuff on the property. Um, I'm in August now. I do have a September photos. And see that e-every month it, it doesn't change much. It has very slow progression. And there's this large container here, uh, which, uh, is clearly a place that, that things can start, uh, growing and there are, or animals could be attracted to, um, uh, junk type container. Oh yeah, so here's the twenty-twenty, uh, and I'll just point out that, like I said, a couple of these vehicles up front, uh, have been licensed. Uh, and when you zoom in on them, you can see that they are currently licensed. Um, and then, but you can still see stuff scattered throughout the property. Uh, the other thing that seems to be happening is that the, um, the licensed vehicles have been placed out in the front to, as kind of a screen for the unlicensed stuff behind them. The petitioner has a fence, uh, through most of the backyard. Uh, the fence has been working very well as a screen. Um, uh, in past declarations, uh, we have, uh, let the, what's behind the fence stay behind the fence. And I think that's where we'll end with the photos. Um, again, a-and these photos from October were taken last Wednesday, uh, so they are fairly recent photos. Um, uh, there are still many abandoned property, unlicensed vehicles on the property, uh, and planning zoning staff request that Minnehaw County, uh, declare the property a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one-ten-six. And I am available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing. Is, uh, um, person who owns this property here? Come up if you want to, come out and speak, identify yourself and whatever comments you have.
Ron Heye, Minnehaw County. Uh, it's far as the, that barrel I'm going to get rid of, but, uh, most of it's cleaned up and, and, uh, I've been doing the best to try to keep it clean, but things come and go.
Just remind you to sign in, Mr. Heye, if you did not, with your name and address at the do-at the door. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Heye? Commissioner Kerski?
Are you running an auto dismantling yard here?
So it's all strictly hobbies though. I build street rods and cars and stuff in the shop and, you know, to just get parts from different vehicles.
That's a lot of vehicles, thirty plus?
Oh, no, no, there, I don't think there's thirty of them, but there might be.
Okay.
Volkswagen and just different things that save parts.
Motorcycles, tractors.
Yep, motorcycles too.
Well, I would just say it's discouraging to see you back here. And, um, it's discouraging to see that there hasn't been a lot of progress. Obviously, your neighbors are discouraged because they're reporting it.
There's a neighbor, there's not a, I, I challenge you to find another neighbor besides, uh, Kevin Koopman's, uh, buddy, uh, up, up the road to find another neighbor that will even call it a public nuisance.
Well, there are people who drive by and, I mean, it looks like a public nuisance.
About it but Kenny. It's like, and I started probably back on a personal deal too. That's why, where the complaint came from.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heye. You can sit down unless I have a question for you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for or against this property? No one's moving. Okay, commission? Kevin, can I ask you how much stuff you think there is that needs to be removed yet?
Um, that actually may be a, a fairly difficult question to answer, uh, because, uh, these photos have all been taken from the road, um, and as I said, it seems like the front things, uh, may be covering up things behind it. Uh, so I guess, uh, if there are twenty cars on there, I would say maybe half of the cars because of the vehicles and stuff behind, uh, licensed vehicles.
Thanks, Kevin.
Well, I would just say to be consistent with the action we just ta-took, I would make a motion to declare this a public nuisance and give him thirty days to clean up the property.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I? It's a mess. I mean, it's not Jay Leno's garage, but it's a lot of vehicles there. I mean, are we telling you how many vehicles you can own? Well, no, but we do have li-laws that say if you own them, they need to be licensed. Semblance of order would probably go a long way. Kevin, what's his zone?
The property is zone A-one agriculture.
Thank you. No comments, just thoughts.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to uphold or declare this a public nuisance. Roll call vote. And give him thirty days. Sorry, that was on there too, thirty days.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Hamburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, sorry.
What's the deal on the, the zoning part of it?
You know what, you can talk to Kevin after.
He don't want to talk to me about it.
But you have to talk to Kevin, or you can talk to Scott, and Scott is here. He's over here. He's Kevin's boss, so you have to talk to him, okay?
All right.
Um, let's move on to item number fifteen, which is a briefing on the third quarter twenty-twenty-two American Rescue Plan expenditures. Susan, I think, yeah, there she is. Sorry, I'm looking in the back of the room for you.
Uh, Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. Um, we just wanted to bring forward to you an, an update on our spending on the American Rescue Plan funds. Um, we will be required to submit a report to the U.S. Treasury by the end of the month through their portal process. So for third quarter, um, we will be, um, reporting expenditures of eleven million, five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. This brings our total spend to date of just over thirteen-point-nine million dollars. We have, um, just over twenty-three-point-six million dollars left in funds that we have to spend. Um, just to remind you, the requirement is we have to have the funds obligated by the end of December of twenty-twenty-four with full expenditure by the end of twenty-six. As of this time, um, the auditor's office is projecting that we should be able to fully expend the total award by the end of twenty-five based upon known projects as well as current ones that we have on, that were already in place. I wasn't going to go through this in detail for you. If there's anything that you had questions on, we certainly can go through them.
So any questions? Commissioner Bender?
This may not be so much a question as just a statement, and you can correct me if I'm totally off base, but I think that the way that the commission has elected to use these ARPA funds is to pay ongoing, um, expenses and that we have obligated ourselves in the future that we will, um, unless we cut positions and things that we will need to do. And so, um, over the course of this, um, use of the ARPA funds, I think we've been very responsible in using them for things that directly benefit, um, taxpayers in the county. Um, but I just would like to point out that when the ARPA funds, um, end and we are looking forward in a long-term budget that at that point, we are going to either have to make really dramatic cuts or we're going to end up having to do an opt-out. And I just want taxpayers to understand that that's what we're doing here.
Correct. Um, the commission authorized the auditor's office to use ARPA funds for anything, um, any of our ongoing expenses that are currently eligible under the, um, final rule that the U.S. Treasury, um, sent out to all of the, the counties. Um, so when you look at that, at this list, there's a combination of one-time expenses and ongoing. Um, the majority of the items on that list are ongoing expenses that are normal county business. So for example, um, staffing of the COVID isolation unit in the jail. We will have to continue, um, salaries to staff the jail after the ARPA funds run out.
Thank you. Just an example of one of our one-time benefits was that we for years heard about radios for our rural fire departments. And, um, we have purchased, I believe, all of them that needs to be purchased. Is that correct? And also some tower stuff. So you want to speak to that just briefly, what we did do with some of those dollars?
Yes, um, so, um, we did report for third quarter the expenditure of the rural fire, um, radios, which were about a hundred-and-seventy-nine, seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. Um, any non-recurring expenses, um, that are, um, that want to use ARPA funding, they, uh, come forward to the commission for your approval before, um, those are spent. Um, so the other one that recently came forward that is not on this list because we have not expended any dollars would be the sheriff's, uh, office tower improvement project that, um, Joe Bosson recently brought forward. That's estimated right now around three-point-five million, um, and that would be coming on this list, you know, down the road.
Making connectability for those resources much better in our county for emergency services, so.
Correct.
Yeah, super important. We've been talking about for years.
Yes.
Are there any other questions about the COVID money, ARPA funds, expenditure? We do this quarterly, so we keep track of what we're doing with our dollars. Okay, all right, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Um, the next one is item number sixteen, the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Waste Water Presentation. And we thank them for being so incredibly patient because they've been here for three hours, so have we.
Girl takes a lot of time, a lot of planning, and a lot of patience, so that's definitely part of, part of what we do. Well, hey, I have a few folks with me here today. Jesse Fockert, President and CEO of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Our, our organization is the regional economic development entity serving the regional economic development needs for the Sioux Falls Metro and the communities of Minnehaw County, Lincoln County, and now in Cook County, which is a new addition this year. We're really excited about that. Uh, with me today, we representatives from the city of Crooks, the city of Colton, the town of Humboldt, Sioux Valley Energy, uh, and ISG along with Lyons and Rosenbauer. Uh, we did have some folks here from Tri-Valley School District, but they had to step out unfortunately. Um, and so I just wanted to point them out in the room that I had behind me here. Steve and Rachel, you want to get the, the, uh, some of the, we have a few articles we want to set up here as we're, as we're presenting, if that's okay with you. Do you want to get the, is it good to go? Okay, great, all right. Well, hey, I'm here to talk to you today about wastewater regionalization. It's a very exciting topic. Today, we're going to talk about five things. I'm going to use this instead. Uh, we're going to be talking about the background of the project we're brought today, what the current and future wastewater environment is for South Dakota, regionalization efforts, the Hartford Regional Wastewater Facility details itself, and next, next steps, and then take any questions you might have. Rachel and Steve are going to take over on the regional wastewater facility details and help cover part of the next steps, and I'm going to cover the rest of it. So background, how do we get here? Uh, you might recall, we, we gave you, uh, an earlier presentation in May of twenty-twenty-one, but as a reminder, uh, the city of Hartford was placed on a compliance schedule for the discharge of its wastewater uh, earlier in, uh, the, the, this decade, I believe it was sometime in twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen. Uh, they had to be, uh, they ha-have to have a solution in place, uh, in twenty-twenty-five, uh, to meet, uh, to meet the, the rules of the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources. Uh, so at that time, city leadership evaluated all the options. Uh, their options were to perhaps expand the lagoon system there in town, or perhaps build a mechanical facility, or talk with the city of Sioux Falls. So they evaluated all options, and they ultimately decided to, uh, build a mechanical treatment plant. Through that process, they hired ISG to come in and, uh, do a feasibility study to figure out if it would be possible to regionalize wastewater. A lot of things are regionalized, why not wastewater too? Uh, we've been having this conversation now for several years, and we're finally at the point now that we can have more of a discussion about it. Uh, so during that time, then, the city of Hartford through ISG reached out to the city of Colton, the city of Crooks, the town of Humboldt, Lyons and Rosenbauer to study, uh, what their needs are, uh, where they're going. And, uh, we also informed Tri-Valley School District of this process as well, as they have a lagoon system out where their, their high school and middle school and part of the elementary school is right now. So the environment, uh, it's changing. It's changing all around us right now. Uh, water and wastewater, uh, is, has been a conversation I think everybody's been having, especially in the water needs, given what's happening right now in this community itself. Uh, but wastewater, uh, is, is really important for growth. Uh, as you know, that it is hard to have a, uh, business or a residence or any sort of, uh, commercial entity without a wastewater solution. And more and more, it's impossible to use septic systems or holding tanks for those needs due to environmental constraints, such as we see in Lyons, with, with the community of Lyons, which is not an incorporated entity. Uh, it's, it's a community, uh, is mostly on septic systems, from my understanding, over a water protection area nonetheless, which presents its own challenges, uh, and does not allow for future growth. But we all know that wastewater treatment right now is, is already expensive. It is an expensive process and has been, I would say, relatively affordable for the last thirty, forty years. Many of our communities have used lagoon systems, which is nature's way of treating wastewater. Uh, as Rachel likes to say, it takes time, takes time for it to happen. It's God's way of making water clean. Uh, we need a lot of land, you need a lot of time, you need a lot of heat, things, uh, we don't always have in South Dakota, especially during the winter. Uh, but as, uh, our, our national EPA and our state D-A-N-R has, has looked at water quality, there has been an increased, uh, increased standards put in place to mitigate pollution that's in our water. And so, uh, starting in the very near future, the state of South Dakota through the D-A-N-R will likely be increasing its standards. Uh, we ammonia and E. coli limits now with phosphorus and nitrogen in the near future. And we're also encouraging regionalization at the same time. Many of the treatment systems we have across the region are aging. They're aging across the state. I was doing some research for this presentation, just to kind of remind myself of, uh, what was going on in twenty-eighteen. The Argus Leader did an article on, on the, the state of wastewater infrastructure in South Dakota. And at that time, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of upgrades were needed to make our systems, uh, manageable for the future. And so, uh, the D-A-N-R again is encouraging regionalization, and it was a key component, I think, to the Hartford project that I'll let Steve and Rachel talk about later. But another reason why, uh, regionalization, I think, is important is that there's, there's a shortage for wastewater operators. We hear that from many of our partners trying to find class three or class four operators to manage facilities. Regionalizing, regionalization in theory, uh, and in practice, does minimize that need for, for operators into one facility versus several. I'm going through this pretty quickly because I think we all want to get to lunch, so I hope you, I hope you do forgive me. Uh, so why regionalize? The Beatles said it best, come together. Um, and the state of South Dakota is, is, is following, uh, as well. Regionalization when it comes to wastewater treatment, first and foremost, does produce economies of scale. Uh, less operators, less facilities, uh, less, less management. One facility, uh, does have a, an ability to, to simplify those efforts and minimize the cost. And this is an important part of it, but I don't think it's the most important part of it. To me, I'm an economic development guy. Economic impact is what I want to talk about all day. And we see right now wastewater being a key constraint to attracting industry across the region. For those of you who might be following the Holstone Farms issue, wastewater has been a, a conversation that, that both groups like to use when talking about the site. We're in, we're in ag state. South Dakota's an ag state. Uh, many of our communities are, are ag communities. And if we want to attract or retain, uh, businesses that deal with ag or manufacturing, wastewater is a key component of that. And we look at projects that are looking at South Dakota. Uh, oftentimes, we have to turn away or, or, or not even submit information to a project because we don't have the wastewater capacity to meet that project's needs. When I say capacity, I don't mean the scale. I mean just the treatment process itself, so that water can be safely discharged into streams. Second, you know, expanding wastewater will, again, help us diversify the region's growth by giving industrial users a secondary option that they, that we don't have right now. Regardless of what happens, industrial, residential, we do need wastewater to help make that growth possible. And we've heard a lot today about wastewater and, and some earlier presentations, where some concerns with an aging system. Uh, we've heard that, you know, there's, there's challenges with the property tax base in Minnehaw County, where the, the base we have right now is not able to meet the needs of the county's operations. And this is a problem all of our communities share as well, and that's why they invest in economic development. Because in theory, by adding more tax base to, to our, to our county or city, there's, there's nothing more to collect property tax from to help fund ongoing needs and services. And so wastewater, we see, especially this project itself, uh, can be a catalyst for growth outside of Sioux Falls in more rural parts of the, of the county that could, in theory, and I think in practice, uh, produce a, an investment or a return for the county in the form of a, a stronger, more stable property tax base. We don't have an option. Something has to happen eventually. Um, our goal was to help save taxpayers money today, as well as creating a secondary option for industrial users and residential developers. Things don't get cheaper. Uh, I was just talking to Steve in the hallway about, uh, about siding a building today versus a few years ago, and, you know, costs for a middle building are up fifty percent. And that's not going to slow down. That's going to continue. And we know that if, if towns wait until twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-eight or twenty-thirty, uh, their costs are going to keep, we're going to continue to increase, so it's making it even less affordable to live in parts of our great region. And we also want to help our towns capture the growth that is projected from Minnehaw County. We live in a thriving, beautiful metro that has the, uh, the best workforce opportunities in the state of South Dakota, if I may say so myself. And that's what my, that's what attracted my wife and I back to this part of the state after we moved away for a couple of years. Uh, and our mission at Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is to empower our communities to grow. And that's why this project, we think, is so important, because it does give them that opportunity to have more of a say in the growth that happens in this region by attracting it to their communities. This is an important part, too, I want to cover again, is, is, is the environmental standpoint of this. And I'm not an engineer. I'm not going to try to talk about this too much because I'll just make a fool of myself. Commissioner Kerski and I were talking during the break about make sure the words that come out of our mouths are, are good. It's only going to just pause and not go into this too much. Uh, but we do know that, that wastewater, uh, does have a connotation of being dirty. Uh, you know, the state of South Dakota does have rules in place for, for, for what it needs to be discharged, what can be discharged. But regionalization, uh, helps by increasing the water quality by having one discharge source versus, in this case, four or five. Mechanical process, we would better treat the water so that as it goes into our, into our streams, in this case, this Gunk Creek, it is a cleaner product than what is currently in that water. Uh, you don't have the same ability to, to treat, uh, water in certain areas, uh, through the lagoon systems. Whereas a mechanical system does have that ability, I believe. I'm going to, I'm going to stop before I get ahead of myself. But also, we see that, uh, sometimes there's some nimbyism when it comes to siding wastewater facilities or even expanding them. This might surprise you. Neighbors don't like to be next to stinky stuff. And, and we know that not all lagoon systems are stinky. We know not all mechanical treatment systems are stinky. However, there is that connotation that they do stink. And occasionally, there might be some odor as things are moved in and out of those systems. But again, back to workforce, uh, having one system with one discharge is cleaner, and having one operator versus many, uh, is a more efficient of taxpayers' dollars. Even update here, we know that Hartford is on the compliance schedule. They're working forward on their system regardless of what happens. There are conversations today and ongoing. Uh, Lyons and Rosenbauer as well are limited to their growth due to the septic, septic system that's in place and, and being in a water protection area. We see this conversation as also as a business, business retention and expansion issue. Rosenbauer is one of the largest employers, uh, in Romanah County, uh, and does create, uh, quite a bit of jobs for folks that live in the communities of Colton, Lyons, Hartford, and Crooks. Uh, we want to see them grow here. We don't want to see them have to go somewhere else. And not being able to, uh, treat their water in place or nor have the rooftop growth that could happen in that area is a challenge. Now, I'm not saying they're going to go anywhere. I'm not saying that. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying our job in economic development is to make sure that the, the conditions are right to ensure that businesses stay here versus go somewhere else. The city of Crooks is growing, uh, quite quickly. I'd encourage you to go to Sioux Falls Business. We worked with them and Jody Schwann to have an article published late last week talking about the amazing growth happening in that community. Uh, they're currently, uh, there's limits on ammoniums and capacity issues due to that growth. The city of Colton is working on a new housing development. We'll have to have some more details to share about that later on. Uh, but they know that if they want to be, uh, successful in their retention efforts for both families and businesses, they need to have expanded capacity, which their current system will not allow. In the town of Humboldt, uh, they just, they just made, redone some major renovations in town. I'd encourage you to drive around Humboldt. It looks amazing. They've done a very good job of, uh, replacing some of their streets and much of the infrastructure underground, but have looked into expanding the, the lagoons and have had issues, uh, finding available land to do that. And so there's some problems across the region. And if we want to continue to grow, we need to be proactive in, in facing these issues and finding solutions like this one that we have here today. With that, I am going to, I believe, allow Rachel and Steve to come up and talk about this and sound much more educated than I am on wastewater. Thank you.
Uh, Rachel Close with ISG. I wanted to start out with a little bit of a story. When we started looking at the feasibility study for the city of Hartford, we really wanted to make sure that we were not only looking at what the current and future needs were for the city of Hartford, what they wanted their community to look like in the future, but we also wanted to make sure that the neighbors were involved. I always use the analogy, we were on our way to the store to get some bread, and we were asking if anybody needed eggs or anything. So we wanted to make sure, because we didn't want to get through this process and say, gosh, we should have talked about this three years ago. We, we were all looking at the same thing, and that was really the goal of this whole process, was to make sure that we were encouraging that consistent growth around our community. So the Hartford, uh, regional wastewater solution, we're starting out, which is kind of giving you an idea of where we're at with the Hartford plant. The Hartford wastewater plan is under design right now. We plan on starting construction, um, late in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, and we are currently funded by SRF funding at, for a one-point-five-six million gallon per day plant at an estimated project cost of a little over sixteen million dollars. Um, that plant includes the twenty, twenty-five-year growth assessment for Hartford with an aggressive growth probability, but also includes a million gallons of capacity for additional growth. And whether that be regionalization, industrial, or a combination of both come through there. So this is, it's going to get a little So this is, it's going to get a little small here, but part of the regionalization, it looks really small, part of the regionalization studies, we met with each one of the communities listed, including Lyons, Humboldt, Colton, and Crooks, and talked through what their growth needs were, what their aspirations were for wastewater and allocations, and looked to see what that component would look like. So this is just a real quick financial breakdown of looking at not only their growth assumptions, but also the growth assumptions, but also looking at what the financial impact would be on a regionalization. The concept being is that the Hartford plant will be a Hartford-owned and operated facility or is, will be a Hartford-owned and operated facility. But in the event that regionalization would be an opportunity, the other communities would have the ability to buy in into the plant, to buy allocations for wastewater treatment and become a serviceability component. The major component of this is the infrastructure as we start thinking about that aging infrastructure, but we have to get wastewater from point A to point B. So that becomes one of the major impacts into this cost. So we've broke those costs down into the capital investment for each one of those communities as well as the infrastructure cost to get the wastewater from their existing community over to the Hartford wastewater treatment facility. And that being the major expense of the whole facility. And here's just a real quick overview of that conveyance cost. Again, we've divided those costs into not only the cost to buy an allocation for not only their current and future uses in the wastewater treatment plant, but also for that conveyance cost. And this is really what we wanted to talk to the county commission about today was the cost of conveyance. For, we've broken down the cost of conveyance, the estimated conveyance cost for both the city of Colton, Humboldt, Lyons, and Rosenbauer, which includes facilitating a low-pressure system or a gravity system to collect, they're 100% septic system right now in Lyons, including Rosenbauer, who is a major employer and producer in town who now hauls their wastewater on a weekly basis outside of town. And then finally, the city of Crooks. So that comes into that regional wastewater solution, conveyance cost of roughly $10 million investment. Jesse?
So our next steps for this project here are to finalize the funding sources. None of our communities at this point have committed to this regional project, but we're working to find a funding solution to help make that possible, to allow for better growth in a timely order that is affordable for all players. Part of that is weighing the total cost structure for each of our communities. I believe the city of Crooks is at conversation with the city of Sioux Falls, the city of Hartford is also engaged in that process as well in the past to see how the potential cost savings could be with that system versus their own system and ultimately chose to build with their own system. If we can figure out a good way, we can figure out a good total cost structure for that, we'll then go into stakeholder meetings within our communities to inform stakeholders, voters, taxpayers, the need for wastewater infrastructure improvements, along with the plan to move forward. And then through that, then we'll be refining a regionalization operating agreement between all the players and then communicating the results back across the region. Questions you might have for me? We also have the mayor of Hartford here with us, the mayor of Colton, the mayor of Crooks, leadership from the town of Humboldt, as well as the president of Rosenbauer here as well. Be happy to take any questions you might have for us about this or other things happening in economic development as well.
Questions for Jesse?
I don't have any questions. I guess I would make a statement, and I know it's, we're a long ways from getting to the end of the interstate on this one. But the whole issue of growth, we all benefit at the county and the city and the state. 20% of the county's budget comes, or 20% of the property tax values fund our budget in the county. I know the schools and other organizations certainly contribute to that also. But the real issue is we need to put rooftops in the county to generate revenue and to generate growth. A long time ago, I was on the city council and I was part of the group that invested in bonding the Lewis and Clark issues. It was significant, everybody was concerned about the dollar amount. I think it was a good decision. If you look at what has happened since people made that decision, we've had good growth, the city certainly has benefited, but so has the county. I think the whole region benefits frankly from an economic value. Sales tax grows. This is something that impacts growth almost immediately. And since frankly, the county's budget, I think would have a significant growth with property tax values if we were to invest in this project. I know that some people can argue about the dollar amounts. Deferring a general fund deficit down the road is attractive, of course, but I don't think that's going to generate positive things as much as a property tax or an investment in the infrastructure of utilities and the need to see some growth. So we don't get sales tax revenue, that's beside the point. I think that's an argument that we need to have with the state again. There may be other options some point down the road that we consider changes in government-related issues, but I really feel that this is putting money where our budget is, so to speak. And I've felt that way since the beginning. The ARPA funding and the other things that we have had a responsibility for were unexpected dollars, we've used a significant amount of that. We still have some dollars that are discretionary. We'll have to have that conversation, obviously, but I'm very supportive of making an investment in the future.
Commissioner Bender?
I'm very supportive of you guys finding other resources. And very hopeful that there's some other money floating around. We've had a long meeting today and we talked about some very high-dollar projects. We have forecasting, fabulous forecasting from our office that really helps us make decisions that, based on the funding formula that's in place through the state.
All of my beautiful comments weren't heard. Anyway.
I appreciated them.
Yeah. I think you did a great presentation. I think that the project does make sense. I'm just not convinced that we have funding here at the county unless the state wants to change our funding formula or unless some other magical solution comes. I would really hope that there might be other funding out there for you guys that hasn't landed on us yet.
Commissioner Kerski?
37 million and change, all been allocated for the next four years, that's our ARPA funding. We've identified a place for every bit of that money. Plus, I'm more curious from the communities, Crooks, Hartford, Colton, Rosenbauer. I mean, it's easy to be for something if somebody else is going to pay for it. What's your community's pulse? And not only do they have to come up with the money to get the pipeline there, but there's going to be ongoing operational costs. Have you guys had public meetings? Has there been discussions on these things? And I guess I'd be interested to hear, you know, what the tone of those discussions are. I know you have a plan, you have to do something by 2025. I don't know if this is the only plan, if there's other plans. I'm all for economic development and doing what we can to support, but I don't know if the rest, the taxpayers of Minnehaha County as a whole would be for funding smaller communities for this stuff without them being involved in some way, shape, and form. So I'm curious, I don't know if you're ready to answer that question.
Absolutely. So maybe two ways to look at the question, there's what the city of Hartford is doing, what the other towns are doing itself, right? So the city of Hartford is moving forward with this project regardless of what happens on the regionalization side because they are on that compliance schedule, need to have a solution in place sometime in 2025. And the city of Hartford has held stakeholder meetings to talk about this project and has been, I would say, a very public process, as much as it can be. And so the people of Hartford are well informed with what's happening here along with the potential costs for the city and any grants that have been received or could be further pursued, right? So that part has been well communicated and well explored.
Good.
When it comes to the city of Crooks, city of Colton, and town of Humboldt, we have been working with the leadership there to explore the option and what could be done to decrease the cost of the option so that it is attractive for their stakeholders, their taxpayers, their voters. And so before we go into making any decisions, and I'm not speaking on behalf of them, but more just informing you of the process that has taken place to this point, they want to explore it in great detail to see what funding opportunities are out there so that when the chance comes for them to buy in and there's a buying cost on the facilities along with the compliance cost or the conveyance cost, that they have done their due diligence for their people to ensure that the cost is affordable today but also into the future. And if any of my colleagues want to speak from Colton or Crooks or Humboldt on that, they'd be more than welcome to. Is there anything you want to add more than that? I'm going to welcome Mayor Butch Osby, mayor of Crooks, here to join.
Thank you. This is a project I've been working on with the engineer and with Humboldt for three years. It's not, we've upgraded, at Crooks, we've upgraded our sewer system. We did a new lift station last year, we're doing another one this year. We are pulling as much weight as we can financially. I think this is still, when you talk about the county dollars versus out in the county, I still think you have to take a good look at what we could bring when it comes to Commissioner Bennigan's comments about tax flows and increased taxes. We can't do this by ourselves. We need help from the county and the state, and we get that, but we can't afford that cost in between. So I really take it somewhat personally when it's said, well, I hope you can find funding other places. You're our county commissioners. We're part of the county, no matter if we're not Sioux Falls. And this is a big deal. It's probably the biggest deal for Lyons and Rosenbauer. They have over 300 employees, they're the largest manufacturer of fire trucks in the world. Just think of what possibly they could bring that's in line with what they're already doing. But you're talking about Aquifer where city is getting all their water with pumps out there and you're talking sewer systems that are pumping out into drain fields. So I really think this is a big, big deal, as was Lewis and Clark. I really like you to think twice about how can we help find the money. Thank you.
And maybe with that, it would be a good time to have Scott Oian with Rosenbauer come up and just speak for a few moments about the growth that they're seeing there. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Scott Oian, I do live in the town of Hartford and work in Lyons. As Ms. Heiberger knows, I've been traveling to Lyons now with school and work for about 50 years, so I'm well-versed in the town of Lyons.
Scott and I went to school together.
Yes. In Lyons in particular, it's going to be somewhat of a challenge because roughly 21 houses in Lyons and there is no, they're a village, so there is no formal governmental structure, no tax base there. So I can't speak for them on the financing part. Rosenbauer would be willing to contribute for sure, but our need is bigger than our footprint in Lyons. We need people, we need team members, we need to be able to expand. We have right now need for at least 50 employees beyond the 350 we have now. With horizontal integration, it would be another 50 to 100 plus. Quite frankly, we have looked prior to COVID as far away as North Sioux City to provide growth, simply because that's where employees, team members possibly reside. So we rely heavily on all cities and towns and villages in the county of Minnehaha. We need that growth there, we want people local. It's, as you know, with the price of gas and things, it's difficult to draw people from quite far away. Currently, we draw from every surrounding county to Minnehaha and beyond, down in Viaburg, Beersford, we have people commuting that far. Gets to be a challenge though when times get tough. So we need to stabilize locally. We would love to work with all the cities on some growth potentials, some cottage industries where we are purchasing product from out of state, where we would like that a local product so we have more control and ability to grow in that regard. So critical for us, especially to help all the towns in Minnehaha County, it is a, would be a tremendous growth potential. Questions?
I have a comment. Thanks, Scott. My comment would be, or maybe it's kind of a question, you're not asking us for $10 million, that's the total amount, and I'm assuming that you still have to talk to the state. And so that 10 million is the total of all the conveyance costs and everything. And so that's not, you're not coming to Minnehaha County right now and saying, we need you to come up with $10 million.
No, we'll settle for eight.
And then, what's that? Yeah, that would solve your problems when, yes. But, yeah. But, and the other thing is, is, you know, I think of quite a few years ago, I think, Jesse, maybe it wasn't you, but somebody was working on that cheese plant up by Dell Rapids, and that didn't go through because there was not wastewater treatment in order to have it. So it went to another county in a long ways from here. And as we put rooftops for businesses, that takes the pressure off of those house tops of property tax, and we are funded by property tax. I don't know that this is ARPA money, but I mean, it's a tough decision because whatever we would, if we would, contribute would probably have to be, come out of general fund dollars, which is really tough, or have to be bonded. And as Commissioner Bender said, we have a really big project right now that is in dire need to. And I am supportive of trying to figure out how to do that out there, but I just don't know where we fit in that puzzle right now. But I just want it to be said, it's not $10 million.
Yeah, you know, there's lots of impact there, Commissioner or Madam Chair. You know, I think when we first approached you about this topic in May of 21, you know, we hoped the commission would consider allocating ARPA dollars towards this and maybe taking on a bigger chunk than perhaps you thought was appropriate at the time, given that there were so many constraints on how you could use ARPA funds when it was first passed in 2021. My understanding that that has since changed and some of the restrictions have been lifted, which allows the county to be a little more discretionary in how it spends that money versus just only on those few items. So I think when it comes to considering this, you know, you have a lot of things to weigh. But as you do have that discussion, if and when you have the discussion, you know, if the county would choose to contribute to the conveyance costs, you know, it would have to be an amount that would help move the needle. And I don't know what that amount exactly is at this point. You know, when I came into this conversation, I was more, more had the headspace about trying to find a way to use that the ARPA dollars towards this project. But, you know, as we heard today, this is an economic development issue. Of course, it is, it's a challenge for the county, it's a challenge for communities everywhere. How do you find ways to grow that's both affordable and not too quick, but quick enough to have impact happen right away? And, you know, there's been a lot of conversations recently about planning and zoning across, you know, the city of Sioux Falls and, you know, perhaps some big projects can just move outside of the city. I'll tell you right now, and that's not possible. We don't have the wastewater capacity in this part of the state outside of Sioux Falls to handle big projects without large investments. And so what we're trying to do today is help bring partners together to invest into the future so that our property tax bases are all stabilized a little bit better, allowing us to run our governments a little bit more efficiently and effectively and to save taxpayers' dollars through that process, too.
Thanks, Jesse.
So thank you.
Any other comments for him? As you know, we have been here a very long time and we are not- As you know, we have been here a very long time, and we are not done.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you for entertaining our, our, our question here for you. I'm sure you're shaking like I am for a need of lunch, and so with that, I will, uh, step away. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you, guys, for putting up with us for a long period of time. We have a couple more items to do, and we're going to try to finish them up. So item number 17 is consider a bid results and awards recommendation for snowplow cutting edges and authorize the chair to sign an agreement for Equipment Blades Incorporated. Bids were opened on October 5th. Steven, you can make it short and to the point.
This is the first time I've said good afternoon, Commissioner Steve Rowan, Highway Superintendent. Uh, we opened bids on October 5th, and we'd appreciate you to award this contract to Equipment Blades Inc. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call, vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is also as the chairman decide, office to apply for the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, Susan Beamer. Good morning, or, no, good afternoon, Susan.
Susan Beamer, auditor's office. Um, we became aware of the end of September that the, uh, US Treasury had launched the Local Location Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, also known as LATCF, for eligible revenue-sharing counties. Um, this fund was enacted as part of ARPA, um, and just recently we came out where counties, um, and tribal governments couldn't apply for funding. Uh, Minnehaha County is eligible to receive a total of $100,000, um, $50,000 in 2022 and $50,000 in 2023. It would be, um, the purpose of the program is to provide general revenue enhancement. Um, that, within your packet, there was guidance submitted, um, that was provided to us from the US Treasury. Um, if you want to dive in the details, it's, um, very general for what we can use the funds for. Um, the only thing that is specifically prohibited is lobbying.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call, vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan. Item number 19 is consider a request to compromise of lien of DPNO number 362117 and DPNO 66021. Melinda, and I would say, I think this family sat here through almost the whole meeting. I think they just left recently, unless that was not them.
That was not them.
That was not them. Okay, that makes me feel better. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Melinda Storey, Commission Office. Um, the action requested today is to compromise lien 36217 by releasing the petitioner from her responsibility of the joint lien with payment of $761.30, leaving the remaining balance of the lien at $2,474.50 in the name of the male member named on the lien, and to compromise lien 66869 in full with payment of $738.60. That's 50% of the $1,477.20 in legal fees. The petitioner is asking if you would forgive the poor relief on that lien. Uh, the petitioner's in the process of buying a home in the amount of $1,000, $159,000, and is scheduled to close on October 20th. The two liens will need to be resolved prior to moving forward with the closing. Lean 36217 for $3,235.80 represents joint poor relief, joint juvenile legal fees, and legal fees for the male member named on the lien. The petitioner has offered to pay $761.30, which is 50% of the shared amount that she's responsible for. Lean 66869 for $2,806.81 represents poor relief and legal fees for the petitioner only. On this lien, she can only offer $738.60, which is 50% of the legal representation, and she's hoping again that you would consider compromising the poor relief on this lien. Uh, she commented on the challenges of overcoming various financial hardships over the last seven years, and on her persistence in improving her credit rating, enough so that she's now able to qualify for the first homebuyer program. She is employed and works many overtime hours. Her average net pay over the last month totals, uh, $1,400 bi-weekly. Her income tax, uh, filed jointly in 2021 with her current husband, shows wages of $42,342 with a refund of $2,294. Any questions?
Questions from Melinda, this is. Questions from Melinda, this is also extremely confusing. Commissioner Kersky?
Good job.
Yeah.
It was confusing, and you did a very good job on the narrative. And I'm just happy to see the petitioner making the effort that they've done and, and describing the, the situation. Um, I'm supportive of compromising the lien, and I'd probably even, um, make a motion, because she's offering to pay how much, 700?
She is offering to pay, um, on the first lien, 36217, she's offering to pay $761.30, which is 50% of the shared lien fees for the juvenile legal, the poor relief.
Okay.
Um, and then the rest will stay on her ex-husband's. Uh, the amount will stay under her ex-husband. Um, on the second lien, she's offering only $378.60, which is, uh, 50% of the legal fees only, they are her legal fees. And again, she's asking if you would consider, um, eliminating the poor relief.
So I'd make a motion to compromise the lien for a payment of $250 on each, um,
Can I ask why?
I appreciate the efforts that she's put into doing this, she's buying a home. I feel that when we talk about, especially on the poor relief, um, we usually don't even take, or take 50% on the, on the legal fees, which to me sounds fair, but I'm just, um, out of admiration for the, what this person has done and the fact that they're trying to get things together. I just want to, I'm feeling magnanimous and generous, I guess.
I would look, I, I guess I should ask for a second first. Is there a section, a second to Commissioner Kersky's phone, and we could have further discussion? Is there a second? Guys, for lack of a second, is there?
I'd make a motion to accept the petitioner's offer.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, a second. I just want to make a, have a question and then a comment. Melinda, in that first one where it's shared responsibility, is she sharing also the, um, poor relief is in that, or is that just legal?
The, the, it's poor relief as well. So on that lien, there's, I believe, two poor relief. Um, only one of them, uh, the couple applied for, well, actually, they applied for both of them together, but the first one for $880, for $880, $880, um, that was actually recorded here in one lump for both of them. But the second poor relief for $240 was only recorded here for Herbert, and then recorded in the second lien for her only. So they split them up because they weren't, i- it's unclear as to the human services record on, on whether they were married or not, so they, she claimed that they were married April 1st in 1996. That was, is part of the application in 2007. And then they had a default divorce September 15th in 2020. Uh, so, anyway.
So my question is, is that shared responsibility has some poor relief funding in it from her?
Yes.
Okay, so my comment would be, and I will support the motion, my comment would be that normally we do not take 50% on legal fees, but we do, um, um, take, um, discount or take no payment on poor relief. And so I think it all washes out in the end if she pays those total amounts to cover legal fees, because it would be, uh, around $400 in, in, if I'm figuring this right, in, um, poor relief in her first payment. So I will support the motion. Sorry, long explanation. I have a motion, a second, to approve the DPNO. Roll call, vote.
Kersky.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next is the opportunity for public comment. I'm not seeing anyone here that I do not know, so I think there's no public comment today. Commissioners, reports. I only have one. I would say that the fairground ribbon cutting was yesterday, and Commissioner Bennigan, or Commissioner Barth, and I both attended that. Did you have a comment for me? No. Oh, no. Um, is there any non-action commission discussion? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. I think I have just sat over the longest county commission meeting ever, and I think I have the record for the shortest too, so, wait, you go.
Congrats.